All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's Planning Commission meeting, January 11th, 2024. I call the meeting to order at 9:06. And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Through the flag of the United States of America, through the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just a few reminders. The Planning Commission meets the second, fourth Thursday of each month at 9:00 a.m. at 255 North Forbes Street, Lakeport, California. The meeting room is wheelchair accessible. A request for disability-related modification or accommodations necessary to participate in the Planning Commission meeting should be made in writing to the Office Assistant Three at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. Can we get a verification of legal notice?
Yes, everything has been properly noticed.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes. My mic isn't working, Sam.
There you go.
Is it still not working? Is it? Okay. Approve the minutes from December 14th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Moving on to public input. Any person may speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and is not already on today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Speakers are requested to legibly write your name on the signing sheet at the podium and state your name for the record. Again, that is for any item that is not on today's agenda. Can we take a look in the Zoom room?
There are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
All right. Public input is closed. We will move on to our first timed item. Item 6A. Public hearing presentation from County Council regarding policies regarding gratuities.
Good morning, Chair. Ooh, mine is totally working. I'm Muriya Turner, Community Development Director. As part of our ongoing trainings for both staff, the entire department, and now the Planning Commission, we have Deputy County Counsel Carlos Torres here to instruct, just as a refresher, the policies that the county does have regarding acceptance of gratuities. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. This is just a really a quick reminder and refresher on what constitutes potential bribery, any excess gratuities, and especially in your position, which you oversee so many decisions that can affect the county, and there's so much, let's be honest, there's so much money involved. The possibilities of someone wanting to influence your decisions is always never present. So let's define bribery just right off the bat, right? Anything of value, even if it's a future value, offered with illegal intent to influence outcomes and behavior. It doesn't have to be, you know, $5,000 in an envelope, right? It could be, you helped me out here, and whenever you're off the commission, I'd love to hire you on my board. I'd love to give you a position. I'd love to sell you my brother-in-law's car. It really could be anything. At this point in time, the state of California is having a major crackdown on graft and corruption, especially involving the, well, let's be honest, it's mostly cannabis, right? It's a new industry here. There's a lot of money involved, and this is not disparaging on anybody here for that purpose. Clearly, I think the vast majority of growers are good and have no intentions of that sort, but it does happen. Recently, officials from Mendocino, Baldwin Park, Los Angeles City, Los Angeles County, the City of Adelanto, Inland Empire, Calexico, Montebello, Trinity County, and Roanoke Park have all had arrests regarding cannabis-influenced bribery. And that's huge. And what we don't want is to ever see Lake included in that list. So what can happen if someone makes an offer and you accept? Right? Well, the Planning Commission would be covered under Penal Code 165, same as the Board of Supervisors. If you were to accept anything, and I do mean anything, right? The Penal Code is very clear that it says any sort of consideration. It's a felony conviction. Up to four years, incredibly large fines, and it's considered a crime of moral turpitude, which means that if you, well, also, you could never hold any public office ever again. But that also means that if you had a career where there was any sort of licensure, you had to deal with other people's money, you wouldn't be able to again. If you ever thought, well, you know, I made this mistake, I'm going to move on with my life, maybe I'll go to law school, maybe I'll be a CPA, maybe I'll be a real estate broker, the state of California would bar you from doing so. It is, and you don't want to jeopardize your future over, you know, $85 in gift cards because of a moment of bad judgment, because you thought, well, who cares? Who's going to know? Well, someone will know. They'll know, right? The person who offered you will always know, and they'll never forget. And if they get caught for anything else, the first card they'll always have to play is, well, I know an official who I gave some money to, and who's the more attractive target for a district attorney? They can bust growers all day, but a planning commissioner, a supervisor, a legislator, a code enforcement officer, a state senator, they would love to get those under their belt. Don't risk it. Don't do it. There's ever any questions about, I'm not sure if this constitutes anything that I can't take, they offered to take me to dinner to discuss issues that are coming up, you better pay for yourself. Don't pay for them. Don't let them pay for you, because that's a gift, right? Ideally, don't do it at all. If it's a close call, don't do it. I don't want to see the acceptance of a basket of muffins, a bouquet of flowers, $10,000 promise of something in the future. For $1 to $100,000, it's just not worth it. At the end of March this past year, the state of California announced that they were doing deep dives into six jurisdictions that they've decided to keep secret to look for potential graft bribery in the cannabis industry with government officials. We don't know if Lake is included in that. We don't want to find out the hard way. What they were looking for beyond just immediate bribery was any sort of things that could lead to, the potential of, and that would be process and procedure for permitting, if there was impossible standards, if permits were not being processed, if there was inconsistent fines or enforcement. Those are being argued as precursors to bribery. They feel like if the system doesn't work, if there is a bottleneck, people will try to get around it. So they're going to look for anything to where bribery pops up. So it's not just making good decisions, doing the upright thing, but it's also keeping the process running smoothly. Equal application of the laws that we have, and the statutes that we have, the standards that we have. If and when you do receive anything, even if you feel the person who gave it to you had the best intentions at heart, they're just friendly people, they want it to be nice, write it down, run it upstairs to County Council and just drop it off to us and let us know. It's always better if we keep a log of such things. We'll return any gifts. It's not considered a gift if it's returned within 30 days, but we want to keep track of when it happens and how it happens and who's doing it, if there's a consistent pattern, if there's anything of the sort. If you ever have any questions regarding any of these things, we're always right up there on the third floor. We're happy to answer any questions. Come talk to us. If you have concerns about something, come talk to us. We should be your first stop. Are there any questions currently that you can ask in an open forum?
If somebody offers a bribe, is that person committing an illegal act?
They are. Penal Code 165 would prosecute both the acceptor and the offerer. Assuming their intent was illegal, then they're subject to the exact same forms of punishment.
I don't have any questions.
Oh, okay.
Yep, no questions.
We're just kind of waiting to see if there's any, if it was going to be made open for comment, and maybe if there's any questions from the public at large.
Oh.
Regarding.
Yeah, I can open a public comment.
Sure.
Sure. Public comment is open. If anybody wishes to speak, you have three minutes. Please approach the podium and state your first and last name for the record. It's regarding this specific item. Yep. I don't see anybody in chambers. Can we take a look in the Zoom room?
There are currently no hands in the Zoom room.
Sir?
I want to point out that the link that appears and the password is not the same that was in the agenda. And I know that there was a number of people that we had spoken to that were going to Zoom in, so that's why you see no participation. This link is different from what was published in the agenda.
Okay.
Chair, we had a snafu with our Zoom link today. However, the public, when they go to our agenda website, will still be able to click the in-process link, and that's why we have that new Zoom link up there, so that if they click the in-process link, which is more passive, you can't participate from there, they'll see this new link and then can, oops, sorry, can transfer into the Zoom room. It is an option of the Planning Commission. It is not required that we continue the meeting or adjourn the meeting due to a broken Zoom link. However, it is up to the Commission. And so if you would be more comfortable adjourning this meeting and continuing all items to a future meeting date, that is within your authority to do so. The creation and display of the new Zoom link was our attempt to enable as many members of the public who click on that in-process link to be able to access to provide input.
Thank you.
I would suggest that we just extend any public comment period. Instead of closing it, keep it open in case people Zoom in a little late.
I'm just thinking as if anybody else that was planning on attending and they currently can, can't, is there any way that you guys could share that information to them now?
If you give us a minute.
Yeah, we'll give you guys a little bit of time.
At least send a text or two out. Because I know I have lots of people that I directed to that old link.
Sure.
I have also texted a few people that I knew would be interested, and I am responding to emails as they come in.
I'm going to close public comment for this item, and then I will give five minutes for anyone that wants to text, those who wish to attend on Zoom.
Would you like to take a break?
Yeah. So we'll do a five-minute break. We'll be back at 9:25. It is 9:28, a little bit over the five minutes that we requested, and I know that it wasn't probably enough time with technology being sometimes a little difficult and confusing. So we will continue with this item that we have currently, and hopefully more people are able to log in as the item moves forward. Once we move to our second item, I know that there is a lot of public input. One thing that we discussed was potentially having, if anybody does wish to speak, if you have them on the phone, we can hold them up to a mic and put them on speaker. That potentially could be one option. Meanwhile, everyone else can start joining as we move forward.
Is there a ticker of a phone number, or you had lots of phone numbers listed on your?
I mean, if you're able to contact them.
Oh, on my phone?
Yeah.
Okay.
That could be an option.
Thanks.
Sure. All right, so call the meeting back to order at 9:29 to continue with our first item, 6A. We did leave off of, with public input open, and I believe there was no further comments from the public or on Zoom.
Chair, I think that was item 7A.
Was it 7A?
Yeah.
6A was legal counsel, and then you opened, and then.
Oh, you're right. My bad. Sorry. Keep going.
All right, so bringing it back to the Commission, I don't believe there's any action that we have to take on this item. So we will, if that was everything that.
Yes, the item was presentation only. No action is required by the Commission.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to our second item, 6B.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interrupt for one moment, please. On your non-timed agenda, you'll find item 7A, election of chair and vice chair of the Lake County Planning Commission. Staff does request, since there is not a full commission today, that we do continue that to the next meeting, which is allowed in our bylaws. If a chair and vice chair are not selected at the first meeting of the year, you're able to do so at the second meeting of the year.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to continue the election of chair and vice chair till the next meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. So going back to our second item, 6B. Consideration of proposed major use permit, UP 20-71, and mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-86, for cultivation of 130,680 square feet of outdoor cannabis canopy, 36,000 square foot of greenhouse commercial cannabis canopy, and one distributor transfer-only self-distribution license. The applicant is the Cruz Family Farms LLC, located at 8300 Old Dirt Road, Kelseyville, APN 007-023-05.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Porter, Associate Planner, County of Lake. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who took time out of their busy lives to show up. I always get encouraged when people care enough to attend, and I know there's a lot of very strong feelings both for and against both applications, and I want to remind everybody that staff's role in this process is to clinically evaluate projects. We do not look at the emotional aspects of it, but we do listen to public input quite closely. And on the second item, we actually held a meeting with some of the opponents of the project yesterday, which I will touch on briefly when I get to that item. So we have before us right now UP 20-71. It's an 82.4 acre parcel located on the Old Dirt Road in Kelseyville, proposing three acres of outdoor and, I don't remember the square footage, 36,000, I believe, of greenhouse Property's owned ag. I do not think it's in a mapped, it is not in a mapped farmland protection area. If it were, they would be required to go exclusively into greenhouse. It's not in a flood zone. It's in a moderate to high fire risk area. And again, the property is 82 acres, so what they're proposing is allowed by our code. Yeah, I'm going to switch over to the slides. All right, so for today's agenda, we're going to talk about the permit requests, which I briefly touched on, the project layout, existing uses on site, project analysis, California Environmental Quality Act evaluation, certain aspects of interest, cumulative impacts, which means how many other cannabis grows are in proximity to this one, and then we'll give our recommendations to the Planning Commission. So this is the location of the property. It's 8300 Old Dirt Road, Kelseyville. Old Dirt Road is a marginal shared access easement, and some questions about the legality of use of Old Dirt Road came up early on. And so staff, together with the County Surveyor's Office, determined that they have a legal access easement that permits them access onto the property. Here's the zoning map. Lands to the north, east, and west, and in part to the south are zoned ag. The rest of the property to the south is rural residential. Both zones are generally consistent with larger lots, which matters in terms of separation. The farther dwellings are from any kind of outdoor cannabis cultivation especially, the less likely it is to have a significant impact on neighboring properties. Here are the details of the project. Property is 82.44 acres. They're proposing eight 30-by-200-foot greenhouses and a three-acre or 130,360 square foot fence cultivation area. That would be for outdoor cultivation. They're proposing eight 2,500-gallon water tanks, primarily for irrigation, but we're requiring water tanks, or we're recommending that all water tanks be fitted with what are called FDC fittings for fire use if needed, particularly important in areas that are subject to anywhere from moderate high to very high fire risk. They're proposing a portable restroom, a 10-by-10 waste and fertilizer storage sheds, two of those, one 8-by-40 shipping container, two 9-by-20 parking spaces, and one 9-by-20 ADA parking space. The layout's a little hard to read because of how it's prepared. Shows the outdoor cultivation areas and the greenhouse cultivation area. Existing on the site, they have a well, they have a 12-foot wide interior driveway, and they have a water course located more than 100 feet from the cultivation area, which is required by our code. Regulations, we evaluated it against the general plan, the Kelseyville Area Plan, certain aspects of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and to an extent with state regulations. So the general plan, the applicable chapters are Chapter 3, land use, Chapter 7, health and safety, Chapter 8, noise, and Chapter 11, water resources. Water was an issue that was raised by the neighbors, and so the applicants provided a hydrology and drought management plan, and it demonstrated that they actually have adequate water to serve not only this project, but it would not have an adverse impact on neighboring wells, according to the hydro study. Kelseyville Area Plan, Chapter 3, natural resource policies, and Chapter 5, land use policies, were evaluated against this project. There were no conflicts. The code, Chapter 5, the ag zone, we looked at that. It allows cannabis cultivation, subject to Article 27.13 AT, which describes the parameters for cannabis cultivation. There's a subzone of waterway on the property. However, the drainage course that's on the property is more than 100 feet from the cultivation area, which is, again, required by our code. Article 41 standards apply to any project, any commercial project in the agricultural zoning district, so we evaluated those standards. And finally, the major use permit standards were evaluated. There were six, and I'll go into those in a moment. Sequo evaluation. We found that there were several potential impact categories that could be affected that required mitigation measures, and those are aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, noise, transportation, and wildfire. So those have all been addressed through mitigation measures within the project. Aspects of interest, water use. And I touched on it briefly, but there's one existing well that produces 40 gallons a minute. The projected demand for this project is 1,430,000 gallons per year, which is roughly 4.2 acre feed. I mentioned the eight 2,500-gallon water storage tanks on site. Estimated recharge exceeds the demand from this project, and according to the hydro study, it would not adversely affect other wells that are in the vicinity. Other aspects of interest, access, that was a big one for some of the neighbors. Initially disputed, we were able to verify that the Old Dirt Road is a recorded shared access easement that does not prevent or prohibit this type of activity from occurring. That access easement came to be through Resolution Number 82-42, which was verified with the County Surveyor. The county concluded that the applicant has legal access to the property, so we regard the recorded access easement as being a viable access. Tree removal. Applicant has not indicated whether any trees would be removed. However, based on the aerial photos and the positioning of the cultivation areas, it appears that up to 30 oak trees may need to be removed. We do not know the size of these trees. Planning Commission can require a tree replacement plan. We actually went as far as to require a three-to-one replacement for any oak tree removed that was five inches in diameter or greater. And so if they pull 30 trees, they'll have to replace it with 90 similar trees. The trees can be clustered, they don't have to be in a certain area, but they would have to be maintained in a healthy state, irrigated, and that would be for 10 years, or the life of the project. Power. Power is going to be a tough one. They cannot get power onto the site, according to information received, I believe, from PG&E. So they're going to need to use solar power. Well, solar panels take up space, they potentially can produce glare. We have not seen a solar plant, and so we are proposing that they provide us with a solar plant. And my personal hope is that it would not trigger a further sequo review. I don't think it would, because I don't think the panels would be significant enough, because they're elevated off the ground, to where it'd create additional ground disturbance that would rise to the level of requiring a grading permit. Impacts. You can see what's around it. The little and medium-sized dots are other approved cannabis projects. And I believe the, I believe the diameter of that is one mile. I can't read it. So those.
It does say one mile on the staff report, within the one-mile radius of the project.
So that would be anything within one mile of the. So that would be, um, anything within one mile of the subject site. Uh, public input, we received forty-one comments on this project, um, mostly objecting to it. Um, and the primary points of concern had to do with legitimacy of access, incompatible use with the neighborhood, traffic, odor, water availability, and security. Pardon me. Um, I confirmed yesterday that the applicants have passed a live-scan background check through the Lake County Sheriff's Department. They are qualified to make this application. We don't regard the security concerns as being, uh, valid for several reasons. First of all, they passed a live-scan background check, so that shows that they're of good character. Secondly, they have, um, a security plan that shows security cameras, uh, which is required for every cannabis cultivation. So they have means of having onsite security. Uh, odor potentially could be issue. Uh, outdoor cannabis cultivation is difficult to mitigate odors. We are not requiring any kind of fragrant plants to be planted around this, uh, cultivation area. We have in the past, but typically that's in areas where there's more homes located closer to the cultivation, uh, for an outdoor grow. Um, traffic, again, we've, there are two aspects to this one. There's, uh, the amount of traffic, which is very likely to be minimal. Um, if they have four employees, it would be potentially sixteen vehicle trips per day using Old Dirt Road. That would be four arriving in the morning, four leaving at lunch, four returning from lunch, and four leaving to go home at night. But that's assuming four employees. They indicated that they would have up to four employees. So best guess, based on size, is two employees during non-harvest, four employees during harvest, and four employees during construction. Compatibility with the neighborhood, um, this is very common. Uh, it's very common for neighborhoods to not want cannabis in their area. It's a new industry, it's scary to a lot of people, I understand that part of it. Um, Lake County allows cannabis cultivation, uh, subject to a major use permit, which is a discretionary permit that can be denied, um, but there has to be an adequate reason for denial. And perceived incompatibility with an established neighborhood is difficult to demonstrate. Um, and finally, legitimacy of the access, I've already covered that. So, our recommendation is for the planning commission to adopt mitigated negative declaration, IS twenty-eight-six, with the findings in the staff report dated today, and to approve major use permit twenty-seventy-one, subject to the, uh, proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Chair, I'd like to request a five-minute break, please.
Alright, uh, we will continue this item at, um, nine fifty-one. Uh, it's a five-minute break, thank you. Hello? Alright, uh, we will continue, call a meeting back to order at nine fifty-three. So thank you, Eric, for the, um, presentation. We will open up public, uh, input.
Chair, um, sorry to interrupt. Um, staff is going to request this item be continued to the first meeting in February, um, but I didn't want that to impede your, your, uh, desire to hear public input at this time.
Thank you. So for all of you guys that made, uh, that came all this way, uh, we will hear your, uh, public input on the item. Uh, so if you guys wish to speak, uh, please approach the podium and stay your first and last name for the record. And you will have, uh, three minutes to speak. Uh, once the timer goes off, um, I will let you know, and just kinda wrap the comment up, so that everybody else gets a chance to, uh, to speak for their three minutes.
And they know that it's for this item.
You just go into order that's here?
Uh, yeah, you could just go up there and just stay your first and last name.
Okay. Can I have an assistant? Okay. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Claire Ansenyatt. Um, my husband and I own eight-two-six-zero Old Dirt Road, which is adjacent to the Cruz Farm under consideration. Perhaps you find it unique that our road is called Old Dirt Road? Well, in fact, it's an accurate description. We live on a private dirt road, actually an easement for the property owners along the road. There is no gravel or upkeep for this road, except for when some kind neighbors take it upon themselves to pitch in with materials and equipment to tend to, tend to it. When that happens, the majority of the easement properties cover the costs, something the Cruzes have never contributed to. Due to the nature of this private easement, we are extremely concerned that the major cannabis enterprise is simply not feasible, and creates an excessive amount of high risk that you, as commissioners, who are responsible for the safety of the residents and businesses of Kelseyville, should be extremely concerned about. There are many, many egregious aspects of this enterprise, but let me highlight the obvious that all Lake County residents have to deal with over the past few years: fire. I quote from the February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two comments by CAL FIRE, which is part of your permanent package, quote, "This location is within proximity and surrounded by very high," all caps, "wildland fire hazard severity zone." This is the most extreme and hazardous area category for wildland fire risk," end quote. Please see the photo that will show you that this entire area is covered in chemies, which is extremely flammable. So I'm continuing to quote, "All private roads and access used for this project shall meet the minimum fire safe standards for emergency vehicle ingress and egress, one-way-loop road standard cab use, or two-lane road. A road is two ten-foot lanes of travel for a total of twenty feet of drivable surface, not including the shoulders." You can clearly see from this next picture, that's my SUV on the road about fifty feet from the Cruz's entrance. There's absolutely no way that two cars could pass on this road. Despite the fact that the county says that there are egresses and, um, easements for turnouts, we who have to drive on this road and negotiate two cars by backing up for a half a mile in order to pass will tell you otherwise. I know that Old Dirt Road does not comply in the least with the CAL FIRE standards. Commissioners, by permitting this major enterprise, you are putting my family and my neighbors on Old Dirt Road and White Way at an extreme risk. You are ultimately responsible for our safety, so please consider carefully your decision today. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the visuals. Uh, please stay your first and last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Michelle Wright, and I own property of four parcels on Wyatt Way, and the Cruz's property is directly behind what I call my cattle pasture, um, which consists of native oaks and then, uh, pasture land for grazing. And I was able to, uh, print out some information that I would like you to consider today, so I was hoping maybe I could, um, have that passed out. Thank you very much. So, um, I wanna talk to you about the specifics of a, um, um, negative declaration. Um, so, um, with regard to, uh, this, um, proposal, um, when an agency uses a negative declaration, it's saying two things, according to law. Uh, one of those is that it's reaching a conclusion or making a declaration that an environmental impact report is not necessary, um, the negative. And the environmental impact report is basically a more detailed analysis of project effects on the physical surroundings. And I don't believe, as a representative of the community, in, uh, your capacity, that you can make a negative declaration regarding this proposal. Um, so in other impacts, I believe, still need to be investigated in order to give a, um, approval of this project. Impacts that must be investigated are fire, road use at impact, um, Eric Porter, um, talked about the employees going back and forth on Old Dirt Road, but he did not talk at all about the deliveries and product that goes back and forth on that road, and the semis that go back and forth for these kind of projects. We know that, and I won't go well into that, because my neighbors, the Bennetts, uh, lived right next to one of the ten grows within the mile radius that you guys showed on your slides previously. Um, and there is definitely an impact. I've had to move my fence on Wyatt Way, in the widest section of Wyatt Way, for a diesel truck to get into a grow next to me, um, because they were going to take out my fence to make it into the turn for their driveway. So I can't imagine what would happen on Old Dirt Road. Um, so, uh, road use and fire, road use and impact, neighborhood cohesion, property value and collaboration, and natural resources, vegetation, and water are the things that I think are most important to be investigated. I'll focus on water today, but I would ask you to consider analysis of the above, as they are all impacts on this proposal. So, um, I have not thoroughly investigated, um, the Aquifer report. In fact, um, that was not sent out with any of the packages, uh, to the neighbors. Um, but I can tell you that at least three neighbors that are surrounding my parcel, um, have water delivery every single summer. And that's for residential use, not for a grow of this size. Um, and I want you to know that I'm not against cannabis. However, I believe that it would be unethical to determine this proposal as a negative impact without the proper studies. Cannabis products utilize double the water than other commodity crops. An outdoor grow of a hundred square foot uses twenty-two-point-one gallons a day in the growing season.
Excuse me, that is the timer, um, if you would like to wrap up your comment.
Sure, no problem. So I wanna let you know that just for the outdoor use, that would be two-hundred-and-nineteen, uh, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight gallons of water per day. That does not include the indoor grows for this project, and I'd like you to really consider that and be able to give time for the public to look at the Aquifer study that was done, um, with regard to this proposal. So at this time, I am against this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Eric Ansenyatt. My wife and I own eight-two-six-zero Old Dirt Road. I wanna elaborate further about the Old Dirt Road easement. This easement is approximately about two miles long, and the Cruz property is in the first half-mile, uh, from its start at White Way. On the old, uh, road easement, there's a number of ho, of homes before and after the, uh, Cruz property, which will be at higher risk due to its commercial enterprise. As was mentioned previously, this easement is quite narrow. Most of it is ten to twelve feet wide, and only allows one car to pass at a time. The CAL FIRE report has already stated this area is the highest fire danger possible. It also requires that the Cruz family should widen the Old Dirt Road easement to be at least twenty feet wide to comply with CAL FIRE's ingress, ingress and egress requirements. This puts the Cruz family into an immediate dispute with all the neighbors along their, along the way to their property, as they will have to take land away from the neighbors in order to comply with CAL FIRE. I frankly think it's completely wrong for the board to approve this application, knowing that it will automatically generate conflicts among the same neighbors that the board is supposed to protect. This is wrong. I also wanna point out that the county conditional permit requires that the Cruz fa, Cruz family get permits from a variety of authorities having jurisdiction. And while it lists some of them, the permit does not specifically list CAL FIRE. I request that CAL FIRE be added to that list, since they already have submitted a report. Second issue is traffic to and from the Cruz property. Per the Office of Cannabis Control's initial study, they anticipate twenty trips. I just heard Mr. Porter say it's sixteen in writing. The report says twenty trips per day during harvest season. And that's just the employees, that does not count the commercial traffic bringing materials in and out, product in and out. The Old Dirt Road easement is in poor shape just with the current traffic from the neighbors. It is rutted, rutted, and has considerable erosion. Adding twenty trips per day plus commercial trucks will completely destroy the easement. I do not see anywhere in the conditional approval that the Cruz family needs to improve the easement to accommodate increased traffic. There's an oversight that needs to be rectified. In conclusion, I do not think the board should approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name's Marcy Long, I live on White Way. My property butts up to the end of Old Dirt Road. I'm not against cannabis, I'm not against growing. I was shocked to see there were ten commercial grows within a mile of my house. One of the larger grows, uh, has quite a number of semi-trucks going back and forth on a weekly basis. Uh, White Way was a perfect road when I moved there thirty-three years ago, and then the fiber optic was allowed to dig twice, and now the road is a mess. Um, I would encourage all of you to take a ride down Old Dirt Road, so you know what we're talking about. It is not a road. It is a dirt path with ruts and rocks and water running through it in the winter. Um, if you have a regular car, good luck. In my neighborhood, we are, we know as good neighbors that we don't waste our water, because it is very, very little, especially in the summer. It's inappropriate for the spot for so many reasons. You're hearing it from all of us. And, uh, how many would be too many in that one-mile area? Do you have a rule on that? Okay, that's it.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Norma Hodges, and I used to sit right there taking the minutes at the board of supervisors' meetings in the eighties. So I've been in this room many times, and I have no idea what I'm going to say, except for I have neighbors who run out of water. They're going to be pumping that water from our water table, and I would just ask if one of you, and you could report to the others, that drive out there. If you're driving on White Way, which is where they'll drive, it's been torn up so bad that it's falling off, and we can't even, we can't, we have to pull over if this is on White Way, this is-
The county-maintained road, the White Way, yeah.
Yeah. And it's a disaster, since they put fiber optics in, and then they did it wrong, and they dug it up again, and it's a mess. And they do try to do the potholes, but it just comes out when it rains. And it's just not feasible there for that type of, um, I just want you to know that I don't approve, and none of my neighbors do. We live there, we know what it's like, and one of you drive out there, drive on White Way, I'll meet you coming head-on, and you'll have to get over, first of all, and you're not, probably not driving a truck. So I just wanna say, I'm glad I'm not sitting in this room anymore.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, my name is Scott Bennett. I'm a local consulting engineer, and I also live in the vicinity of this proposed project. I'm gonna ask a few questions, strictly on a technical side. This is, uh, use permit request for a commercial, uh, cannabis facility, part of it is commercial. And the CAL FIRE standards have two different, uh, aspects of what they call, you know, for, for the improvement of the road. One is a driveway, and one is a road. The driveway, in the, uh, description that was included in the, uh, comments from CAL FIRE, it states specifically that a driveway is for access to a site where there are three or fewer homes. And also, it ha, it says it does not comply, or it's not compatible with a commercial site. So for two reasons, the fact that there are more than three homes, and that this is considered a commercial site- a commercial site, it's not considered a driveway. It's considered a road. So if it's considered a road, it has to be a 20-foot road, two-way road, which is, if they want to build that, I think they need to know exactly what that may entail. According to your surveyor, there's a 20-foot right-of-way. To build a 20-foot road in a 20-foot right-of-way is, from an engineer's point of view, impossible. You would have to obtain additional right-of-way to accommodate the shoulder, the drainage ditches, the cuts and fills. And there are some areas where they're definitely going to have to do some cut and fill because the road is just not wide enough. So I think that the board or the commissioners need to include in the conditions of the use permit, a clarification that this needs to be a two-way road, and if there are additional easements required, they need to obtain those. And because it's not fair to the developer to think, oh, we're just going to put in a one-way road and have a couple of turnouts here and there, according to the CAL FIRE standards, that would not comply. So I think you need to clarify and put it in writing in the use permit conditions that this has to be a two-way road, 10-foot on both sides, a total of 20 feet, which includes potentially drainage ditches, shoulders, cut fills, et cetera. And that may require additional right-of-ways and easements to accomplish that. Again, I'm not opposed to it necessarily, but they need to know that this is a major issue for the road. And obviously, people are concerned about the road condition as it is now. I'm sure they'd be happy for a brand-new road, two-way, all the way back and forth. But it's going to be very difficult to construct that without additional easements. So I think that should be included in the conditions of the use permit, a clarification of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to just add to that input with a reminder to the commission that the Board of Supervisors did pass Resolution 2019-124, which notes that does establish both at the state and local level that cannabis cultivation is considered an agricultural activity rather than a commercial activity. And it would then be held to all of the regulations that pertain to other agricultural activities, which does not include a two-way road.
Thank you.
What about the fact that there are more than three homes?
All right, so we'll take the next speaker.
Patrick Ridgell. I'm, I have been involved in the cannabis industry myself on the manufacturing level. I know the laws, I know the regulations involving cannabis, and I know what it's going to require. I come at this from a more personal point of view. My mother lives at the end of Old Dirt Road. She's 86 years old. I will be going in to see her right after this meeting. We go in and out Old Dirt Road all the time. There's another house at the end of this thing. There is a slope on Old Dirt Road past where all these good folks live that I climb and go down every day when I go out to see my mother. If you go out during the rain, like today or yesterday, there's a good chance you're going to get stuck on that slope. You're not coming out of that slope. My mother lives on the end of that road. If you put a cannabis facility on the end of that and don't fix Old Dirt Road up to their driveway, there's a good chance you're going to turn Dirt, Old Dirt Road in a rainy period into a sloppy, muddy, impassable mess. That gets personal with me. My mother is at the end of Old Dirt Road. So if we're going to put a facility in there, if we're going to allow this, the state allows it, the county allows it, it's up to, does it pass all the regulations? And does it, what does the impact do to the neighbors? Please do not block my mother in there with an unupdated road. We built that road back in the 70s. We moved in out there in the 70s. We bought the equipment to fix that road, and it has been more than passable for us with a handful of cars a week going in and out of it. But when the rainy season hits that road, as it is now, it turns into a sloppy mess. So don't kid yourself that you're going to have a couple of cars of employees going in and out for lunch. You're going to be moving equipment in and out of there. They're going to be moving trucks in and out of there. They're going to be hauling product in and out of there and fertilizer in and out of there, and that isn't going to go in the trunks of employees a couple of times a day. So please consider what you're doing to the residents that are out there.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Larson. I'm actually here for another, another item, but this discussion, I know some folks out there, and I enjoyed the picture in my mind of the late, great Randy Ridgell doing roadwork out there years ago. I had a question. Something caught my attention as you were, as staff was giving the presentation, when it said that there's no on-grid power, so they need solar, and they don't, they don't have a solar plan yet. So I'm wondering if, if you were to approve this, can they move forward without having a power source? Could they start to operate? And if they don't have power, are they going to be using generators? So my, I started to kind of spool it out. What would be the impacts then? I mean, can they, that's my big question. Can they operate without the solar plan in place? And can their operation even get started without that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may. This is one of the reasons why we are going to request a continuance. The initial study has relied on outdoor, on-grid power. Given the issue with the easement, PG&E was not moving forward with on-grid power, and that's why the permitee did switch to proposing solar. However, since the easement has been cleared up in the county's mind, the applicant would like sometime to renew those conversations with PG&E. And if that happens, then that has been correctly analyzed in our environmental analysis. If not, we may need to do an addendum and recirculate.
I believe I did read in the property management report that they're planning to use generators until the solar is up and running.
We'll continue with public comment. If anybody else wishes to speak.
Hey, everybody. My name is Owen Williams. I live out on 8280 Old Dirt Road, right next to Eric and Claire here. I'm rather new to the community, living in Kelseyville. Lived here for about eight months now. I'm actually a vegetable grower in the area. I work with Cottonwood Farms, and I'm an instructor at Mendocino College for the agricultural department. Just hearing some of the concerns from the neighbors around here, and I want to say thanks for everyone for coming out. It's really awesome to see you here. As a vegetable grower that's trying to bring nutritious food to the community, something I don't see a lot of around here, there's, you know, not a ton of healthy options all the time for people. It's concerning to hear that all of a sudden the water is going to be affected, because what if during the summer I'm not allowed to irrigate my crops as such? I rely on this for my income, and not only, it's just a personal goal of mine to feed people healthy food. I support cannabis. I have people in my family that use it as medicine. But I believe, you know, we already have, as you just stated, like 10 grows in and around the area, and the commercial value has dropped significantly over the past couple of years, in some places by nearly 50%. So again, like someone stated, like, when do we get to the point where we're just going to not allow this anymore? We're just going to continue to decrease the value? And I'm sure many people in Lake County grow in their backyard already, so who are we trying to deliver this cannabis to? And just as someone that's trying to grow sustainably, I found it kind of disingenuous that they've stated that there's going to be no oak removals, but then immediately after, they state in the report that there's going to be 80 removed. It just seems kind of disingenuous to me. Also, they noted the safety of the applicants, that they've gone through live scans. That's not really the concern. I used to live up on, at Benmore Ranch, up on the Hoplin Grade. This was a larger grow, it was 10 acres. And the people that ran the facility, they were fine, like they were safe people. That's not the issue, it's what that can bring in. We had our body, or the bodyguards onsite actually got shot at from the hills. And this is for a 10-acre grow on the Hoplin Grade. This isn't, you know, that's a far drive from here compared to Old Dirt Road. And we had a safety booth that you had to go through and check in with an armed guard. So are there going to be armed guards on sites with, you know, assault rifles? That's a genuine concern for the community. Are these people from the community as well? Do we know these people? You know, they might have live scans, but do we, as neighbors, know who they are? Am I going to have to start going through safety clearance to go onto Old Dirt Road? These are genuine concerns I have, because I have a girlfriend, I have pets that live out there that wander around, so, you know, this is a genuine safety concern. And also, people mentioned that, you know, Old Dirt Road itself is maintained by the community members, and people are mentioning that White Road is a county road, and I'm sure as many people know, it is like hardly maintained. They fill up the potholes with like...
Those are timer, if you want to wrap your comment up?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They fill it with asphalt, there's sometimes gravel, and there's another rainstorm, and a week later, there's a new pothole. And I know as a new resident, driving through that road, you got to go pretty slow because there's lots of potholes around the curves and stuff. Those are pretty tight turns. If you're putting a big semi truck around there, that's putting everyone in that community at concern, and people like to drive fast down that road, down the Wyatt Way. So you might have some collisions there as well. So just please take all that into, you know, account. As a young person, it's kind of concerning to see all that happening, especially to the environment. You're saying 1.4 million gallons a year, and that's okay, but we just had a historic rain season, so is that accounting for the drought that can come back to California easily? Just please take all that into concern. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Please approach the podium and state your first and last name.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Cruz. I am an applicant, but I wanted to know, am I part of these three minutes, or do I get to speak? Or am I part of the three minutes as well?
I mean, you could speak for your three minutes, and then if you, if you guys wish to...
Yeah, I think we'd rather speak at the end because today was supposed to be our planning commission, and we flew from Florida, so we might not get a chance to come back on February 1st, and we might have to do that via Zoom. And we were planning to speak today, so if we can...
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we could save it to the end and we'll give you a little more...
Okay, thank you.
To answer all the questions that might come up throughout the, the meeting, so. All right, can we get our next speaker?
Hi, my name is Janet Reichert, and I live on Wyatt Way. And I'm concerned about the water. In the report, it talks about use of 2.2 million gallon, gallons? And, but someone spoke and said it was 1.6 gallons, so I think it's actually more. And that looks at the macro view of the use of water, but as neighbors, we're very concerned about our neighborhood. As already been stated, some people in our neighborhood run out of water. We have a walnut farm, and we have decided to dry farm because we care about our neighbors. We also sometimes have to plant new trees, and so we need a little water for that, but we use as little as possible. We have a tiny lawn right in front, just a few feet, because we care about our neighbors and we know that water is of value. So I'm concerned about the water use. Also, I just went to a meeting last night where I heard a supervisor talk about climate change. Climate change being one of her main points, and also, in her words, where climate change is looming in our future, and it's going to get worse and worse, there's going to be more events. So that is a concern, and that's what I have heard from the supervisors, that climate change and our effect on our community, the fire, being very important, so that those were some of the main issues and that, that supervisor thought were important out of all the issues taking place in our community. I think this runs right in the face of that fire danger and lack of water. And I'm just wondering what the supervisors are going to do when we run out. Do you have a plan for that? What will we do? Or is the cost and the effect going to be on all of us? If there's a fire, then again, our insurance is going to go way up. It already is very high. So all those things concern me because of the water. And on our road, on Wyatt Way, we have a lake when it rains. You probably all know our house, the yellow one. There's a huge dip in it, and so when it rains, you have to stop and slowly go through it to our driveway. So I'm sure everybody knows that part, and it's just a mess. I can't imagine semis on that. Thank you very much.
Steamed commission, Mark Lips. I'm with the Right Choice Farm and Catering. I'm here also, as Elizabeth, for another issue, but I felt compelled to speak in that, you know, one of the reasons that we moved here, and one of the things that we've loved about this community is the neighborhoods and the neighbors and the involvement and the care that people give to this county and to the areas within the county. Boy, just listening to all the comments, you know, it seems pretty plain to me, and then for a person to come up and say that they're investment, they're an investment company from Florida, looking at us as, almost as a tool versus a community. I know it's subjective, but first of all, I wonder, are they going to buy it, get it set up, and then flip it? Is that their investment process or investment strategy? The other thing is, are they going to be at your kids' Little League games? Are they going to donate to the crab feed? Are they going to show up for community meetings? Are they going to improve the area? You know, when you talk about ag, Maria talked about some of the rules for ag, you know, I would think, and I, and I've sat in your, your chair in other towns, and one of the things I used to always ask these applicants, have you spoken to your neighbors yet? Have you spoken to your neighbors? Everybody that came in to apply for development, I would say, did you go around and talk to your neighbors? That should be, if nothing else, if it's not from the heart and it's from the head, then it should be a strategy. You should go around, have a little town hall meeting with your neighbors, find out what their objections are, and then try to meet those objections. You'll catch more flies with honey than you will with vinegar. And once you do that, then you have to be willing to go beyond what is in the box of the rules and regs and say, okay, you know what? We're going to help you improve this road. We're going to do this for you. We're going to make sure all of this is happening, but we're going to be full transparency. And I think, I mean, it's just an etiquette. It's just a, something that, that, and I think you guys can ask it. When these guys come and make their application, you say, hey, first of all, just out of curiosity, have you gone around and spoken to your neighbors about this? Have you had meetings with them? Because that goes a long way. And so, anyway, let's be careful about approving development when there's no empathy or no heart coming back in to the community. Thank you.
Hello, folks. My name's Paul Reichert. I live on Wyatt Way. And this summer, I'm working on my fence, and all of a sudden, a helicopter comes over with two law enforcement guys hanging from it, and they drop them into these marijuana grows that are illegal. And then they went back, got more law enforcement. So the county and state was going after all these illegal grows, which was kind of an amazement thing to watch, is, you know, two officers on a, hanging from a cable with machetes and machine guns, going in and chopping up these illegal grows. And so I did some research, and I know the state of California allows grows, but the federal government still does not allow consumption, sale, or, or growth of marijuana. And so I'm just wondering, anytime the federal government can come in and take over these pot plants, confiscate, because the federal... Confiscate, uh, because the federal law prevails over state law. And I'm just curious, is this grow going to have over a thousand plants? Cause a thousand plants by federal law is a million dollar fine and five to 40 years of incarceration if the federal government does come in. And then I did a little more research. Jeff Sessions, who was on the previous uh, administration, AG, it was on his agenda to actually start going in and taking over these grows until he resigned. I don't know if he was bribed or not. He's not here. Anyway, so, um, so it's a federal law. So you guys technically could be breaking the law by allowing a grow to go in. Technically, I'm just saying technically. And from a moral standpoint, my daughter is a elementary school teacher. My daughter, other daughter is a social worker. My son worked at the foster care and suicidal kids. Drugs, drugs, drugs. It's everywhere. Now, why do we keep putting more drugs out there? Uh, in California, we ranked, I think, 48 out of all states in academic. I think the kids, 10% of the kids are at acad, at a grade level. And we work with kids on Wednesday night at Refuge at Grace Church. And uh, they talk about how much pot is prevalent in the schools. You can't even walk in the bathroom without pot just stinking it up. So I'm wondering, are we, what are we doing? Why are we putting more drugs out there? We need to turn this thing around and get families uh, and the drug epidemic under control. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Does anybody else wish to speak here in the chambers? Who hasn't spoken yet? Uh, we'll take a look at the Zoom room.
Participant in Zoom room Jason Berger, you are now allowed to speak. Please state your first and last name and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, um, my name's Jason Berger. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, um, for holding this meeting and allowing us all this space to, to voice our concerns and opinions. I want to thank all my neighbors um, for coming out. Um, and just say that I appreciate my neighbors and my neighborhood and my community there in Lake County so much. Um, so I have um, just wanted to echo the sentiments and statements first off that my closest neighbors, um, who are closest to my property proximity wise, Claire and Eric made um, regarding the road and the photos that they showed and the easements. Um, the Cruises have done virtually nothing to improve their property in six years. The Cruises also did illegal tractor work and destroyed the property marker flag from the previous assessment that was done. The tractor work also ingress into my property at 8280 Old Dirt Road without my permission or respect and regard to any easements. I'm not inspired with confidence these people can coordinate, establish, maintain, and manage such a venture while adhering to all standards, laws, and basic common neighborly decency. I'd like to also echo the sentiment of my friend, tenant, and farmer and, and uh, another farmer, fellow farmer, Owen, regarding the safety of the neighborhood and add this. We've never had any incidents of robbery or theft in the neighborhood since I've owned old, that property or since I bought that property 14 years ago. Until about eight months ago, about a year ago, 13 years, I lived at that property. I spent almost every day of my life at that property. And we never once in that neighborhood had one incidents of robbery, criminal mischief, or anything like that. Except when one of the members of the Cruz family, Armando, and his girlfriend at the time, broke my windows and stole things from my house, such as my laptop and other personal items, which he thankfully later returned. I even went as far to obtain a restraining order against his then-girlfriend, but was unable to serve one against him as he had no listed address. This is all a matter of public record with Lake County. The Cruises have never once, since the beginning of this process, contacted directly any of us neighbors about their plan. They haven't reached out to us about any of this. Nor have they ever participated in any of the community meetings that we have had throughout many years as a community of Old Dirt Road. I'm asking the supervisors now to seriously reconsider for all the reasons I just listed, as well as the litany of other reasons, legal and community-wise, to reconsider approving this proposal, to, to vehemently deny this proposal. And I guess, I guess that would, that would be my three minutes or, or, or I'm, I'm, I'm uh, I'm up and I'm done speaking.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, you did make it right at the three minute.
Right at the three.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, do you have any more speakers on Zoom?
A Zoom participant Stephen Berger, you are now allowed to speak. Please state your first and last name and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, uh, Planning Commissioners. My name is Stephen Berger. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good, thank you. Uh, I am Jason Berger's father. You just heard my uh, son and I thought he uh, eloquently expressed himself. Uh, I would just like to note a couple of things. There have been in writing many objections expressed to this Cruz application, uh, including but unlimited to the encroachment on Jason Berger's property. I have been told by Andrew and Eric that uh, that's been addressed. There's no encroachment anymore, but I haven't seen any proof of that. And um, I, until there is, uh, I want it to be very clearly understood that Jason Berger does not intend to give his uh, uh, his consent to any encroachment on his property. And without encroachment on this property, there's really no access. There's no ready, ready access to the 80 acre parcel owned by the, the Cruz, the Cruises. So uh, the commissioners should uh, consider that very seriously, please. Uh, there's also a faulty hydrology report. I think the impact on water has been understated or misstated. I don't think uh, there's really any understanding or any clear answer to the use of water by an 80 acre cannabis grow and how that's going to impact the neighborhood. And I, I just don't think that's right. Water is such a scarce and valuable resource. Uh, we need to preserve water, not use it um, like it's an unlimited uh, resource that's available to everybody. And the inadequacy of Gold Dirt Road is an access and ingress into the Cruz property. Uh, it clearly is not a 20-foot road. I've driven that road. Two cars cannot pass on that road. And in uh, times of inclement weather and rainy weather, it's an impassable um, uh, dirt, uh, morass, which is what number of people have stated. So uh, I, I think that the planning commissioners need to view this Cruz application with a great deal of scrutiny. Uh, Armando Cruz is entitled to use his property in any way that he wants, but under conditions that are reasonable and that the neighbors can and will accept. He's uh, he, he can't adversely impact the Old Dirt Road neighborhood and the neighbors that live there. You just can't do that. And, and I think it's telling that Armando uh, does not live there anymore. And now wants to use this, um, have this uh, project approved. And uh, he's really not a member of the community anymore, at least not by the way he's acted and not by his current residents. Last but not least, the fire hazard is of extreme importance here. Anybody who lives in Lake County knows what a fire, how devastating it can be and what a fire can do and all the damage it will cause. And I think the last thing we need in the Old Dirt, No, Old Dirt Road neighborhood is a, is a fire. Uh, if the fire hazard from a grow this large is just preeminent. And uh, there's no higher priority, I don't think, for people living in agriculture property and in the Old Dirt Road neighborhood than fire prevention, fire hazard prevention and control. And uh, we must be sure that we have an adequate plan that if there's a fire.
Hi Steve, uh, that's your three minutes. If you would like to wrap up your comment?
All right, I would ask that the, uh, I would ask that the planning commission uh, reject the Cruz application or if approved, make sure that all conditions imposed are stringently required, are stringently required and stringently complied with. And thank you very much. I'm sorry that I exceeded the time. I didn't mean to do that.
Thank you.
Zoom participant Christopher Veach, you are now allowed to speak. Please state your first and last name and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Christopher Veach. I've been a resident of 8200 White Way for over 30 years. And I just want to impress upon you today that regardless of what these properties are zoned on as on the map, um, White Way and Old Dirt Road have the character of a rural residential street. It's a quiet place. When I walk in the morning, the only things I hear are the calls of crows and wild geese. The only things I meet on the road are deer, not cars. So if you vote to approve this, you could be changing the nature of this quiet community. And regarding the water use, the well on my property has been a test well since the 1960s. And the water available has slowly been creeping down over the years. So this is a real concern um, that needs to be addressed for this project. I oppose this project without further study or restrictions to ensure that the nature of our neighborhood isn't negatively impacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoom participant Kyle Geitner. I apologize if I stated your name wrong. Um, please state your first and last name and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name's Kyle Geitner. I am the principal engineer for North Bay Civil Consulting, uh, which I have helped uh, the Cruz family since, I believe, 2019 on, on this project through all aspects. I just wanted to, you know, ensure the community that we've, myself and the county staff, along with the applicants, have been on site, I think, um, three times at this point. We, we reviewed everything. We definitely understand all the concerns. Um, that is why we have implemented everything we uh, have stated in the property management plan and the site plan, maintaining all of our distances from every um, required setback. Um, again, the, the Cruz family, they're definitely trying to um, make a better uh, cannabis cultivation activity out there. There are a few illegal grows in that area. And you know, from the, from what everybody knows, when there are illegal grows, they're not regulated. So they're proposing a cannabis cultivation that is regulated. And that is where, you know, the conditions of approval step in. And those do definitely ne, need to be followed in order for this to proceed. And everyone is aware of that. So just with that being said, you know, we understand the concerns. And I feel as if uh, my clients definitely have put in an effort to address all of them and make it beneficial for everyone. Um, but yeah, everything has been studied and observed by uh, multiple different agencies. And I don't see a very large impact to the community. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. And do we have any more hands in this room?
There are no more participants with raised hands.
All right, uh, we have no more hands in the Zoom room. I'll bring it back to the chambers if anybody wishes to speak.
Good morning. My, my name is John Jensen. I'm a resident of Lucerne. I'm here for another, um, the next event. But I, I couldn't help but come up and ask you guys, how is it that a guy who commits vandalism and theft against his neighbors passes a background check? That's a, that's a question. Okay, secondarily, in my own neighborhood, we have a paved street. It's a 20-foot wide paved street. And out of the blue, a semi started, a guy with a semi started parking at his house and drove up the street daily, up and down it every day. And within about, I called the county, I don't know how many times, to let them know this street's getting destroyed. Uh, and in fact, a culvert was legitimately destroyed by this semi. It's a culvert that had been there for years. So how's a dirt road going to stand up? Thanks much.
Thank you. Uh, is there any more hands in the uh, chambers? Anybody that wishes to speak?
My name is Judy Bennett. I live at 8720 White Way. And I have a cannabis grow that is right next to us, property. Um, they use our easement every day. They come and go. And when they were developing it, it was extremely disruptive. There were semi trucks. There were, they, they couldn't pass. There was nothing they could do. They were backing up. They were going, going off of the road. Um, bringing in supplies. There's still delivery trucks. There's still people coming out there all the time. It's a locked gate down at the end of our property to where it goes in. Um, we're like a mile off of White Way. So our horses and livestock can graze. There's, our property is on both sides of the easement. And when this just all of a sudden starts happening, um, it's very scary to me because I have to make sure my animals are in and that kids aren't riding horses and et cetera. So I would really consider, I would really ask you to consider the disruptive nature of these grows. And I don't approve it.
Thank you. Are there any more hands in this, in the, sorry, in the chambers?
Hi, my name is Kristen Brown and I live at 8200 Old Dirt Road. And I just want to point out that one of the first houses on Old Dirt Road does have children. They do have animals. And the way that they would get onto that property would be going directly past that house. And because of the way that house is situated, they don't have a front yard. They have an area in front of their house by that road. And they already have issues with people occasionally going out to visit neighbors that drive too fast and put their children in danger. And my concern would be having people that are not from that area, they're coming into work, that aren't aware that there are children there and driving by too fast and potentially having a child injured in that situation. There is no like gate, there is no fence. So if they go by too fast, they have a very high risk of hitting a child, hitting a pet. If the, those people are backing out of their driveway, they back out on the older road, there's a potential for a collision there because it is a blind hill. So I just want everyone to consider that as well, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. One last look around, if anybody in chambers wishes to speak before we close a public comment on this item?
Just make a clarification about the generator since it was discussed. Cause it's clearly stated in, in the conditions that the operation shall not.
Uh, if you want to approach the podium.
I'm just reading from number 25 on the conditions for, for operation. The operation shall not rely on generators as a primary source of power and shall only properly, and shall, and shall only allow properly permitted when applicable generators for temporary use in the event of a power outage or emergency that is beyond the applicant's control. So that kind of answers the questions about the generator.
Thank you. All right, um, so I'm going to close a public comment and bring it back to the commission. I do know that the applicants um, have a lot of questions that they have to answer or if they have any statements to make, uh, you guys could do so now.
And just as a reminder, this item has been continued for a decision, correct?
Yes.
So we haven't come to an agreement to continue this or to?
Staff intends to make a request to continue it as soon as the uh, um, chair is ready for that.
Okay.
And uh, just to clarify, uh, public comment is closed. So uh, the questions addressed should be towards the commission or staff.
Thank you. Hello, um, my name is Vanessa Cruz. I'm um, one of the applicants. Um, and I just wanted to take this opportunity and introduce myself. I haven't had the chance to meet everyone. I've been here a few times and I have introduced myself to our close neighbors. Um, but there's a lot of faces that I don't know and I haven't had that opportunity. So I'm glad I'm here today so I can meet everyone in person. Um, I didn't, we did a presentation, but. I didn't, we did a presentation, but I didn't want to kind of do a long presentation and do the same thing that the, that the planning commission, or I mean, that the staff had created. So what I wanted to do was introduce myself and talk a little bit about Crewman Family. And Crewman Family is not a big business, business or investors. Crewman Family, consisting of my dad, my brother, and myself, forms a close-knit trio with intertwined familial and business bonds. While 8300 Old Dirt Road embodies my brother's dream, our family unity precedes our shared business endeavors. Hailing from Florida, our upbringing embraces the natural beauty of mangoes, guava, and banana trees accompanied by a quaint chicken coop in our backyard. Both my brother and father rooted in their Boy Scout backgrounds share profound love for the outdoors. I did do like a little presentation with a picture of us and my dad. So Crewman Family is just three of us, by the way. It's just my dad, my brother, and I, so you can all know that. My connection with California blossomed when I relocated for college, and the rest of the family soon developed a deep affection for the Golden State. I did move out to California in 2005, and I did study in California. I went to college out here. And my brother is gonna talk a little bit more, but in between us two, we wanted to talk. I also am reading because we're nervous.
Yes, I have cryptic solcions already. So my name's Armando, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity. But yes, I wouldn't have gone here today without the help of my sister and father. But basically, the fusion of, of my passion for cannabis and farming with my dad's love for the outdoors shaped a shared vision. In 2015, you know, I had a great experience. Basically, I was presented with an opportunity. As we all know, the cannabis laws have been changing rapidly, and in where I'm from, it wasn't really a possibility. However, a sister's friend gave me, presented me the opportunity to work for him on, he was trying to get permitted, I think back then it was, you guys had adopted Measure N, and it was just strictly medical. You could grow 49 plants. So I worked on, on his vineyard and farm in Lakeport, and it was an eye-opening experience. I instantly fell in love with Lake County and the uniquely amazing people of here and the beautiful nature. And then that's kind of what opened our eyes, and we, we found the opportunity. We came across this spot, which was just in our budget. And little behold, they actually, we didn't always meet eye to eye as far as my passion for cannabis, but they took a chance and, you know, helped me acquire this property. And so I, I recognize that the scope of the, the project seems overly ambitious, and, but that's just an testament to the, the power of dreaming big, you know? If you aim for the, the moon, if you don't, I mean, the stars, if you miss you, at least you could land on the moon, you know? So just, it would be my dream to pursue this passion of mine legitimately. As far as the, I know some allegations, pretty extreme ones were made about me. I encourage anyone who has questions, my character, to look into our criminal backgrounds. I did, again, when I first came out here, I helped several neighbors on their properties. And again, to every story, there's always three sides, their side, our side, and the truth.
I'm gonna add to that. The reason why there is no vandalism, I mean, the reason why there is nothing in our background check is because there is no, nothing.
Yes, as far as the allegation of vandalism and me stealing or breaking or any of that, it's completely false. So, yes, my, my priority is just, again, doing things compliantly and being the steward of the land. You know, my dream is to do it all organically and to the best of my ability. And that's, that's all I have to say.
I'll continue. So I, I know that we're supposed to keep everything emotional aside, and that's why I wanted to just stick to the technical stuff. And I didn't think this was gonna be like a civil court hearing or anything, because if not, I would have planned to come with a more prepared, I guess. But I just wanted to come here in person so you guys can personally meet me and see me in person. And all of our neighbors' concerns, we value them. And we haven't had the opportunity to be here as much as we'd like to because we did purchase this land from Pat back in 2016. And our father faced challenge of cancer, and he got his bone marrow transplant in 2020. So he is one of the owners, it's just us three. So we've had a lot of challenges that have, we haven't been able to be out here because of that. Our father is hopefully watching us via Zoom, and he's back home. He's been dealing with his cancer still. And then we had the pandemic in 2020. But we've been at this for five years plus, and you can see that, you know, we're really passionate about it if we're still here. But to add to that, I'd like to add, co-owning this farm presents a unique opportunity to address gender and minority disparities in the marijuana industry while creating a safe and inclusive work environment. Currently, women make up only 22% of executive positions in the marijuana sector, and minority representation stands at just 13%. As a woman, co-owning this farm allows me to actively contribute to changing these statistics. In our society, cannabis is taboo. So this is why I'm, my brother, I'm supporting him. But as a woman, I feel that this is giving me a huge opportunity to represent. Moreover, by establishing a legal and regulated grow operation, we can provide a safe space for women who have historically faced sexual assault risks in illegal marijuana business. Many incidents go unreported due to fear of losing income and potential retaliation in the unregulated industry. Creating a legal farm not only ensures compliance with the law, but also fosters a healthy and positive work environment, reducing the prevalence of sexual assault and promoting a culture of safety and respect. In addition to addressing industry disparities, co-owning this farm enables us to offer employment opportunities to individuals from diverse backgrounds, contributing to a more inclusive workforce. By championing diversity and legality, we can establish a farm that not only thrives economically, but also serves as a model for ethical and responsible business practices in the marijuana industry.
Well, I just wanted to say, because I know a big aspect is the Old Dirt Road. I can't deny it is, in fact, an old dirt road. However, I did live on the property on site for two years, just me and my trader and my three dogs. And during those two years, I did form some great friendships, lifelong friendships. I can say that contrary to what was said, I did in fact help the neighbor Dennis improve the road on two occasions that I can recall. And I'm not opposed to improving that road. And yeah.
We would also, that's why we're here. We're open. Claire was there when we had the walkthrough. I invited all the neighbors. I think it was Andrew, Em, or Eric said, you know, you don't have to invite the neighbors. This, this doesn't have to be open. And I said, no, we want to do it open. We want all the neighbors here. We sent out notices, and they were all able to come and do the walkthrough with us. So we've been very transparent. We've been very open to, you know, hear what the neighbors have to say. And I'm glad we're here today because I've been listening to each and every one of you. And just to say it again, Crewman Family is not a big investment. It's just my brother, my dad, and I. And the reason why it's a LLC is because it's just to protect us three from the few properties that we do own. And I don't have to answer to any, I can't answer to any of it right now, but I'm more than open to have a town hall meeting with you guys. And back to what one of them said, that, do you know your neighbors? Well, I've tried, but unfortunately, I'm not here physically all the time. But I'd love to meet all the neighbors. I can even do a via Zoom with all of you guys. Or like today, I'm meeting you all, so I'm open to that as well. Anything else?
Yeah, during the two years that I was there, I, Claire had invited me for pizza and everything. So, and it's just kind of, I'm, you know, into forming these relationships and pursuing them correctly, keeping everyone happy.
And is there anything else? I know it's gonna be extended to, or maybe it's gonna be extended to February 1st. So in case we don't have the opportunity to be here in person, that's why I wanted to take this time to, you know, introduce ourselves and talk a little bit about us. I appreciate all the time and work that the staff has put into this. As we have said, we're willing to do whatever, you know, whatever's needed from us to make this project go forth. We're very open, and we're transparent, and we're a family at the end.
Thank you. So I'm gonna bring this back to the commission. Do you guys have any questions for the applicants?
I have just one quick question for you. The project management plan refers to this project as Gordo's Greenery. Is that a DBA, or, I mean, you don't look like a Gordo to me.
That's just a nickname of mine. Yes, that was just like something that came to mind.
Okay, it's not a big deal. I was just making sure it wasn't a-
No, it's not a big deal. In, in Latin culture, you say Gordo, out of love, even, even though he's not fat. Sorry.
So, oh, did you have any questions? Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, there are a lot of, we did hear a lot of concerns from the neighbors, and a lot of them were based around the same thing with road conditions. The ones that, that stood out the most to me was about the tree removal and, and obviously the, the power issue. But I did hear something about PG&E, not knowing if the easement issue was gonna be resolved or not. So that question, I'm gonna skip that one till later. But based on the tree removal, nothing was mentioned on the report. And the condition is that you have to, whatever trees are removed, the three to one, you have to maintain those trees for 10 years or the life of the project. That, to me, doesn't seem to, because what if the project ends before those 10 years, and then now those trees are, all the trees that are cut? We lose all these, you know, depending on the size of the trees. I haven't seen the property or what trees and diameters.
Ideally, we intend not to take them down. I know they're in the grow area, but we prefer to just plant around versus removing the trees.
And yeah, have you guys considered potentially reducing the number of, of plants to, to avoid certain, you know, tree areas or-
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
That's something that I'm open to. Again, as I said earlier, we kind of did too big because we've invested a lot of money into this project. My father's savings are tied in this. So I wanted to make it, you know, feasible and worthwhile for them to jump on board and help support my, my dream. But yes, if I can do this legitimately at, at any scale, would be a dream come true.
Other questions? Thank you.
I have a number of concerns concerning the, just, part of it is for staff. So if you'll just kind of bear with me so we can just kind of get through this. On the conditions of approval, general condition number 24, I think, should be, shall instead of should. And the summary should say, on the property management plan, I think the, the summary should say, actions will be taken to eliminate, not reduce odors. And then also on the property management plan, I found a discrepancy in your water consumption. You're saying four acres at six gallons per plant is about 1.2 million gallons per month. Your projected use of 175 gallons, 175,000 gallons per month is enough for just under 1,000 plants. So that's 250 per acre. The hydrology report says you plan to use 12,000 gallons per day. That's 360,000 gallons in a 30-day month. So that's kind of a major discrepancy to me. That would be 500 plants per acre, which is a spacing of, I think it's 88 square feet. It's like eight by 11, which is like a pear orchard, if you can kind of visualize that. I don't know if that's what you're intending to do, but it'd be kind of nice to have those numbers accurate so that we can-
Well, again, a lot of the logistics, I don't know.
Sorry to interrupt. Kyle, our consultant, is on the Zoom, so I think he can answer that one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we really need an answer. I just kind of want to point it out that-
Yeah.
There needs to be some consistency in the way these things are presented so that we can make an evaluation. Let's see. Also, on the hydrology report, it uses numbers that don't align with the well completion report. Page four of the hydrology report. Also, neither of the two well pump tests included are dated. And what called my attention to that was, the stationery is really old. So I was kind of wondering, it's really out of date. I need to see a date on that. I'm sure that's available somewhere. Initial tree study, the tree removal on page seven, I'm not seeing a tree inventory. The initial study refers to about 30 blue oaks on the south side of the property. So if you can, in your property management plan, state exactly what you want to do, then it's a lot easier for us to evaluate. There's an agency comment from Cal Fire. A road is two 10-foot lanes of travel for a total of 20 feet of drivable surface, not including the shoulders. This is one of your major issues. I'm just saying. The staff report on its first page points out that biological studies need to be done and tree replacement, which in my humble opinion is, as Everardo also stated, is inadequate as mature oaks require hundreds of years to be replaced. So we need clarification on that. So kind of in summary, I think that one of the biggest issues is the width of the access road. I think Cal Fire's got to approve that. We need, we need to see some kind of biological assessment. There's an issue brought up by somebody about newts, and of course, the trees, the water, as I mentioned. And I think that's kind of a lot. So I, for that reason, I would support kicking this down the road. I'm not sure if all of this can be accomplished by February or not, so.
A date certain or continuance, without a date certain?
Why, do, do we need a date certain, or can we just do a date uncertain?
We can continue it to a future meeting. So when the, when the commission gets to that point, I'll, I'll go into detail about that.
Okay. I could go on, but I think there's enough. Thanks.
And just to kind of echo Commissioner Fields, seeing your solar plan would be helpful as well. I don't want to get too far into it, knowing that this is going to be, or hoping that this is going to be continued to give them a chance to go ahead and get their ducks in a row.
Any more questions for the applicants? All right. So I'm gonna bring this back to the commission for, for action.
Staff does request a continuance to a future meeting, time and date not certain. We will notify, we will go through our public hearing notification process again, as is required in the government code. However, in addition, given the number of people who have taken the time to send in electronic comments or emails, we will also notify every member of the public who has submitted an email, as well as anyone who's here today who would like to place a request after this hearing to be added to that notification list. That way, the public won't lose track of when this does come back.
Thank you, Director Turner. Are we all in consensus to go ahead and grant that continuance?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
All right, motion passes to move this item to a date uncertain. Thank you.
Do we have to vote on it? Do we have to vote on it?
Oh, yeah.
Consensus?
Yeah.
It's a question for Nicole, perhaps?
So I think we do have to vote. So all in favor to move this to the next, I mean, to a date uncertain?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Additionally, if we may request a five-minute recess so that anyone wanting to give us their email address can do so before they leave.
Okay, we will take a five-minute break, and we'll be back at 11:15.
I bet you most of them are gonna stay for the night.
All right, everyone, please take your seats. So we can continue our meeting. Everybody's here. All right, moving on to our next item. Item 6C, public hearing, consideration of proposed major use permit, UP 20-40, and mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-50, for cultivation of 22,000 square feet of cannabis canopy inside eight greenhouses within a fenced 47,040-square-foot enclosure. And one type 13 cannabis distributor transport-only self-distributor license. The applicant is Higher Ground Farms, John Oliver, located at 3545 Findley East Road in Kelseyville. The APN is- at 3545 Finley East Road in Kelseyville. The APN is 008-026-07.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Still Eric Porter, still Associate Planner with the County of Lake. Our second commercial cannabis application also had a lot of concerns raised by neighbors. I'll get into those shortly. First of all, I want to go over the agenda briefly. We'll talk about the permit being requested, the project layout, site description, project analysis, aspects of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendation. Property is located on Finley East Road in Kelseyville, immediately adjacent to the Hells Bend School House, otherwise known as the Old Kelseyville Schoolhouse, which is a historic building on the state and county registry. Kelsey Creek is located here, past the road, roughly 450 feet from the cultivation area edge. The zoning, it's primarily ag and APZ. The neighborhood's characterized by productive agricultural lots. It's in a semi-rural environment. See the zoning, it's primarily ag. The request, they're requesting one A-type 3B medium mixed light, commercial cannabis cultivation. And in plain words, it means they want 22,000 square feet of canopy inside of eight greenhouses. They're proposing a 48 by 100 by 22 and 1/2 feet tall metal building, which is relatively close to the schoolhouse property where the pad is. I'll get into that in more detail momentarily. I talked about the eight, 80 or 30 by 96-foot greenhouses that they're proposing. They want to have two 30 by 96 feet greenhouses for immature plants. They want to have eight, eight by 40 shipping containers for drying. They want to have one self-distribution, transport-only license so they can legally transport. And the property is 23.69 acres in size. Here's the layout. The proposed canopy look, or canopy location right now is roughly in the upper-middle portion of the site. The project boundary is located 345 feet, as I measured it, and actually on the plans, from the old schoolhouse. Here's an aerial photo kind of showing where Regulations, we evaluated it against the Lake County General Plan, the Kelseyville Area Plan, Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and state regulations. General Plan, it actually fell under several chapters. Chapter three is land use. Chapter nine, open space conservation and recreation describes, oh, chapter eight is noise. We evaluated it under that. Chapter nine actually covers historic buildings. And so we need to do evaluate it against that because of the presence of the old schoolhouse. And chapter 11, water resources were evaluated. Kelseyville Area Plan, we evaluated it under chapter three and chapter five. Lake County Ordinance, you can see which parts of the ordinance were applied. Not quite sure why all these ran together, but they did. So the property is owned AWWFFFAI. So that would be agriculture, floodway fringe, waterway, and agricultural industry combining district. So those are all evaluated. We evaluated it under Article 41 Performance Standards and Article 27.13.80, which is for cannabis, as well as 51.4 Major Use Permit Findings for Approval. In the SEQA analysis, we found several categories that potentially affect, would be affected by the project, including aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, geology and soils, and noise. Property is not located within a high fire area, so that's something that is helpful. Areas of interest, water use. Some of the neighbors were concerned about the water usage because of the large amount of traditional agricultural crops being grown in this area. They did a hydro study. It was very thorough. This project taps into the Big Valley Water Basin, Big Valley Aquifer, which is the largest aquifer in Lake County. Estimates are 105,000 acre-feet, or about 34 billion gallons of water are in that aquifer. Of that, about half is considered usable. It's right around 60,000 acre-feet. The current draw in that aquifer is projected to be about 12,000 acre-feet. Recharge from the property, in combination with other areas that would add to the recharge, would exceed the demand of this project. So the water is fairly stout in this area. They're proposing 12 5,000-gallon water tanks that would be used for irrigating. And the total demand, they calculate to be about 690,000 gallons per year, or 2.12 acre-feet. And the gallon is, or the well is very productive, at 253 gallons, according to the well test, gallons per minute. I mentioned the historic Kelseyville Schoolhouse, and this is what many of the comments received by staff pertain to. Potential impacts of the schoolhouse, potential with what was originally proposed to be a shared driveway, which is no longer the case. Potential visual impacts associated with the greenhouses, and even more so with the 22 and 1/2-foot-tall proposed metal drying building. I indicated the building, old schoolhouse is on the state and local historic registry. According to one of the longstanding supervisors at the Kelseyville School District, the building had not been used since the 1920s. This is hearsay, however, it came from an unbiased source, the super, or the supervisor of the Kelseyville School District, who happens to own the property that the old schoolhouse is on. Fundraising for the schoolhouse is happening. It's being led by LARA, the Lucerne Area Revitalization Association, and two of LARA's founders are here today to testify. To date, there have been no documented activity in the building for restoration, and I did verify that no building permits have been applied for to restore it yet, although that certainly is the hope of LARA and their attempt to eventually restore the building. So that leads into the question of, all right, is this building in any way a candidate for 1,000-foot required setback from the cultivation area because it does not meet that 1,000 feet? So what the 1,000 feet applies to, it prohibits certain activities from happening within that 1,000 feet. That includes community growth boundaries, any public or private schools, grades K through 12, public parks containing playground equipment, or licensed childcare, or similar facility, church, or youth-oriented family facility catering to youth. I put the definition of certain school types into this slide, just so you can see how our code defines different schools. And so the vacant building doesn't qualify as a school in its current state. Concerned citizens, the school district, the attorney for the school district didn't provide us information indicating that the building is actively being used. The building has not been cleared by the building official for habitation yet. That'll happen following restoration. Governing documents don't offer guidance in establishing cannabis cultivation near a historic building. The cannabis cultivation would have no obvious impacts to the schoolhouse other than potentially altering the streetscape view of Finley East Road from Finley East Road and from the schoolhouse property. And I indicate due to greenhouses, that would also apply to the metal building, which is going to be taller than the greenhouses. Cumulative impacts, there are several that are within a mile of the subject site. Public input, we've received a lot of public input on this, and the primary concerns were proximity to the schoolhouse, conflicts with anticipated future uses of the schoolhouse, potential harm to the character of the neighborhood, and increased traffic on Finley East Road. And there are other concerns that were raised as well, but these were primarily what most of the people that were concerned about the project had indicated. Yesterday, we met with the two founding members of LARA, and they expressed some individual concerns that Director Turner will address. We are proposing adding additional conditions in, following a discussion I had with the applicant yesterday by phone. I do not have anything in writing from the applicant indicating that he's willing to do what he wanted or offered to do, but that includes moving the cultivation area south to where it's further away from the schoolhouse property. So in order to get what LARA had requested is a 500-foot separation, the cultivation area would have to move south or down by about 200 feet. Now, there's a 100-foot setback required from Kelsey Creek. That is well exceeded even if the schoolhouse, I'm sorry, the cultivation area moves south by several hundred feet. So there's no conflict with the Kelsey Creek, and they're also providing stormwater erosion control measures that have been engineered by Vanderwall Engineering. Concessions verbally agreed to by the applicant include screening trees, I should have let that slide up, sorry. Screening trees in between the cultivation area and the schoolhouse property. The screening trees need to be between the metal building and the schoolhouse property because the metal building would be closer, as proposed, to the schoolhouse property. Applicant is verbally agreed to screening trees. They should be of a fast-growing species that is generally native to this area. The type of trees discussed yesterday in our meeting with LARA were primarily spruce. They should be planted 10 to 15 feet apart in order to give them adequate separation to have their growth. And like any other replacement tree, they would have to be maintained for the life of the project. I mentioned the driveway. There are actually two driveways onto the site. One is obvious. It's the one leading to what had been the house on the property. The other one leads to the two shop buildings, and it's located right here. It's located about 100 feet away from the property line of the Kelseyville School property, and the applicants agreed to improve the secondary driveway and use it as a primary. So that shifts the traffic further away from the old schoolhouse, which was a concern to the LARA group. They had concerns about the height of the metal building, so we confirmed the building that had been approved for hemp drying in 2021, I believe, was a height of 22 feet 6 inches. So we're going to recommend that the height of any metal building not exceed 22 feet 6 inches.
With the additional three feet of the elevated foundation.
Thank you.
So 25, 6.
The property's in a floodplain, so they have to elevate the floor, therefore, the additional three feet would be for freeboard, meaning the floor would need to be elevated. And I'll go to the recommendations now, and I'll let the director take over regarding our proposed additional conditions.
Thank you. We had a very productive meeting with the Lucerne Area Revitalization Association yesterday. We do appreciate Elizabeth Larson and John Jensen taking the time to, to, to make sure that we were looking at all the questions that they had. It has led to, one, two, three, four, six additional conditions that staff proposes be added, and I will read them. First, prior to permit activation, the applicant shall complete and pass a live scan background check through the Lake County Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office report for this background check shall be provided to the Community Development Department. We did find evidence in our review yesterday of a form submitting a request for a live scan. However, we weren't able to find confirmation, and so we're pretty sure it got misrouted. And so since that is a completeness item, we, we are not, we're proposing that this permit not be active until that is completed. Secondly, the cultivation site shall be relocated so that there is at least a 500-foot distance from the old Kelseyville, or I think it's the Old Kelsey Creek Schoolhouse. Next, prior to permit activation, again, permatee shall submit to Community Development updated site plan showing the new location of the cultivation area. Prior to permit activation, just to make a note on this one, we did review the biological and the cultural resource studies for, to see if it included that area, and it is staff's interpretation that it did. However, out of an abundance of caution, we would like to add this condition, which is, prior to permit activation, the permatee shall submit letters to the Community Development Department from the biologist and archaeologist who authored the biological resources and cultural resource reports, confirming that the relocated cultivation site was in the survey evaluated within the biological resources and cultural resources report. Next, prior to cultivation, the applicant, or this should be reworded to the permatee, shall plant screening trees between the processing/drying building and the old Kelseyville Schoolhouse property. The trees shall be a fast-growing variety such as spruce, and shall be planted no more than 10 feet apart, shall be maintained in a healthy state for the life of the project, shall be irrigated. This actually, sorry, should be modified because we have requested vegetative screening from both the, from, from the Kelsey Creek Schoolhouse in between them and the processing building, as well as them and the cultivation site. So even though we're moving the cultivation site back, so it'll be at least 500 feet, we also are going to require screening trees there as well. And then lastly, the maximum height of the processing/drying building shall be 25 feet 6 inches. This will include that three feet of a foundation. So actually, I'm going to add a little wording. It says 25 feet 6 inches from grade. So if the commission is amenable to approving the project today, then the motion would include conditions as amended. Thank you.
All right. So thank you for your report, Eric. I will open public comment for this project. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and say your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Do I need to sign in for the next one, too?
Do I need to sign in for the next one, too? Guess it's still morning. Good morning, Elizabeth Larson with LAURA. We appreciate meeting with staff yesterday, and we appreciate them hearing us. I want to do just a couple of quick points of clarification. The building has been used since 1920, has been used as a community center, and even, I can't tell you the last date, but the school district actually met there, would have an occasional board meeting there for many years. Work is underway at the site, but it's not structural, which is why there have been no permits. We have made sure we've gone to the agencies we need to be permitted with, such as when we did the lead remediation project in May. We took about 130 years of lead paint off of that building. So that was, so that set the stage to be able to go and do the next things because we didn't obviously want people to be exposed to lead paint. There were, I've noticed in listening to the last project, there's some similarities between concerns with the neighbors because both involve out-of-area applicants who just haven't talked to the neighbors. And I think, I think as Mark pointed out, that's just, that's just a really important thing to do. But we're grateful that Mr. Oliver has agreed to these changes. You know, we remain concerned about several things. We had been trying to get ahead of something like this happening because we don't want to be on a collision course with the people next door. We want to be good neighbors. So we think that these changes will help us all live together. We still, I sent very early this morning, around 2:00 a.m., before I went to bed, a few final questions to staff regarding about six things, but they're all kind of connected. So we're still not clear about how the processing building's going to be used. Is it for hemp or is it for cannabis? And we also, one of the questions was, before screening is put around that building, if we could meet with staff or the proponent at the schoolhouse and just look at it. Because one of our concerns is viewshed. A beautiful mountain is sitting there that we all kind of pivot around. And so we want to make sure that that isn't blocked. So it's, and I'm, I've got to go out and look at the site again to think how it might look. The screening in back would be great. So just a couple other quick questions. When, is there a draft design of what that building will look like? Because I don't think I've seen that in the plans. And does Mr. Oliver plan to grow hemp outdoors as well? I know there was a hemp field to the south roughly where this cultivation site will be. There's downcast lighting, which we appreciate for the greenhouse complex, and I'm curious if those meet specifically dark sky protocols? I know that, how long the project's supposed to take to do, but is there a timeline for when it might actually start? Like this year, next year, you know, what are you looking at? And, and again, so just going back to, we just had some questions about, about those, those things. And again, you have those in writing, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're having some technical difficulties. We're having this computer restart real quick. Oh, okay. We'll continue with public comment, but we'll double-check to see if it's working. So can we get the next speaker, please?
Hey, again, guys. Let me just write my name in. So I stayed from the last meeting because I saw a few of my friends are back there at this meeting, so I felt it was only right as a community member to stay and help them out. And it was quite surprising to see that another large-scale permit was trying to be granted for cannabis in Lake County. So it kind of just goes back to what I said last time, like, we're just putting more new grows into Lake County, so when do we stop as a county? Is that like our ultimate goal, is just to have just vineyards and then cannabis grows just back-to-back? As a farmer, someone who grows food for the county and tries to bring people nutritious food, it's concerning to see so many cannabis grows growing up, and I rarely see food operations growing up. That's just a concern of my own. Bringing people good, quality produce in this community is, as I found, kind of hard to come by. Also going back to my last point from the last meeting is the devaluation of cannabis. We're putting in many large-scale cannabis grows, and in my experience living in Lake County, I don't know many people actually buying from the local dispensaries. Most people either grow in their backyard or are buying from someone they know. That's just the reality of the situation. So where is this cannabis going? Is it going out of the county? Is it going to Napa County? Are we trying to grow up for another state? When does it get to the point when we're just outsourcing all of our county's nutrients to other places? You know, as a farmer, I'm trying to regenerate and be good about the environment, so what standard are these cannabis grows being held to? Also, just the, for growing in that amount of concentration, when I did live on this large-scale cannabis grow on Benmore Valley, I actually had to go to the urgent care because during the, as some would call crop-tover, the harvest season, I started to get really bad chest tightness, something that never happened to me before to that extent. I'd actually go and get, you know, nasal, like a nasal spray and take a pill for it, like an antihistamine. And this was right around the large-scale harvest season, so I'm just concerned if this is going in around, you know, Big Valley. Are there going to be children that all of a sudden have respiratory issues? We already have COVID going around, which is a respiratory illness as well. And if that's such a concern to our nation, like, why are we trying to mess with people's respiratory health in other ways? And as a teacher, that just concerns me, that being around children. And also the closeness to Kelsey Creek. I don't know exactly how close it is, but I just, in my experience with these large-scale cannabis grows, I don't know how environmentally conscious they are, even if they are using organic pesticides. All organic pesticides are not safe. Even if they are OMRE-certified, and I'll finish up here, a lot of them are petroleum-based. We recently just saw an uptick in our hitch population, and so that being that close to Kelsey Creek kind of concerns me, is there going to be runoff that affect this hitch population? As a young person, I want to see Lake County be the best environment it can be. I'm directly involved in that process, so just as that, it's concerning to me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Does anybody else in chambers wish to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Galassi. I live close by this place. I also own some other properties with grows next door, and nobody takes into consideration after these grows are done, when they roll out of town and they leave the garbage behind. My property's next door to one of these grows that you allowed, and their garbage is constantly blowing into my property, which is alongside Kelsey Creek, and nobody does anything about it. I stare at god-awful, look intense, and garbage blowing into my property. And these grows are all being permitted, but nobody's being held accountable after they're done and they walk away and trash our land. So that should be something that should be considered, is when they're applying for permits, they should be held accountable after they're done and walk away. I have garbage service at my house. They should have to have the property brought back to the way it was before they trashed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steaming Planning Commission, Mark Lips, with the Ripe Choice Farm, actually closer to this place than I am to the previous grow, but you can take my comments from before and just ditto. I feel sometimes, and this is all subjective, it's nothing you guys have to really pay attention to, you can't, like Eric said, you can't let emotion get involved in it, but this is something, you know, how involved are these people? Are they just using Lake County as a tool to build their business from afar? Are they distant absentee landlords? Like this gentleman was saying, you know, I've, I've heard from wineries, I've heard from other farmers about these grows where the trash, the streams, they're, they're defecating in the streams, they're doing all kinds of things like that. Not that these guys will, but ones that are adjacent to streams, diverting water, all of these things. And these are, many of these are illegal grows, and I don't even know how these guys survive because there's fees and all of that. So everybody says there is, whether we like to admit it or not, a black market component to, to everything. But with that said, I also am representing the Government Affairs Committee of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. We didn't have time to respond formally, so a few of us said, well, let's, let's, let's go up and let's send some letters, let's go talk. So even though I'm a part of the Government Affairs Committee of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, this has not been approved by the board for, as a stand, but we do, as a committee, believe that there needs to be significant compromise. And once again, if you listen to the candidates for supervisor, you will see that one of the top three priorities of this county is tourism. Okay? Now, I know for some, you're one percenters and MBs, things like that, maybe that is too much gentrification in your, in your mind, but it can be gentrification with responsibility and paying attention to the vibe of Lake County. Gentrification doesn't mean that you have to all of a sudden have a Starbucks on every corner or potted palms and stuff like that. No, we continue the vibe of history, of the lake, of agriculture, farm-to-fork, and just the quaintness. For instance, you see in downtown Kelseyville, the access to the lake and the events that go on at Library Park in Lakeport and all of that. All over, you see that. This schoolhouse is something I noticed when we moved here three and a half, almost four years ago. I said, why isn't this like an Airbnb or a library or a museum or something like that? And when you say, and if you say, oh, this is new, it's not new. These guys have been working on this since 2019, but we had a little thing called the epidemic that kind of put a two-and-a-half, three-year break on that. And so I'm, I'm all for mitigating the, I'm not against the grow, but mitigating the involvement, and I think it should be 1,000 feet, honestly. But, so it sounds like in a matter of hours, you've, you've already moved in that, in the right direction. But please, save our history. These are things we can point to and help with our tourism to, to share. And, real quickly, this schoolhouse is important now as a part of our history. 20, 30 years from now, it'd be more important. Those guys will be amazed, 20, 30 years ago, that they had great, great grandparents who went to school in that school. And so let's, let's, let's be mindful of what we can do with this property, this two-acre piece of property, and how it can really resonate with this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just here to represent my noes. I realize that we need industry in, in Lake County, and we need tourism. One of our aspects of pride for this county has always been the clean air. I am inundated with the stench of marijuana and hemp grows. And whatever you can do on this particular site to protect future visitors to this site, if everything, if comes to fruition, to mitigate the smell of a grow so near a historic site, I think that's something that should be taken into consideration. I'm, I'm tired of smelling pot, and I don't object to it as a medicinal issue or as an industry, but I wish they would get their science together and figure out how to eliminate that smell. And until they do, I think planning commissions have the obligation to make sure that that's mitigated as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers wish to speak? All right, I'm going to take a look in the Zoom room.
There are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay. We got one here in chambers.
Thank you again. I'm John Jensen, the president of LAURA. A long time ago, a lot of responsible community members got together on ad hoc companies to avoid abuses of potential marijuana grows. We never imagined that not only would it grow in right next door, but that they would actually literally block an iconic viewshed that people have been enjoying for 150 years. It's a bummer. We're willing to compromise, and we are supportive of this new industry. However, we really need strong concessions to protect iconic viewsheds, cultural artifacts that belong to our community and the community in the future. We don't know how, what this will attract. What we do know is that, again, we have out-of-state people not communicating with locals. Had they come to us initially, we'd have asked them, hey, could you just put your thing back 100 feet? And it wouldn't have disrupted that viewshed. Instead, they lied to us and told us they didn't know what that pad was for. So we're just trying to retain that viewshed and keep this place, and we're, we're working on it. We've already done a lot of work on it. It's been in use since the 20s by the school districts. I'm not sure who you spoke to. It really needs to be protected. It's, it's an asset in Lake County that is, is in jeopardy right now, and it's up to you guys to protect it. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need to sign in?
You could just say your first and last name.
Okay. I'm Tony Scully. I'm, I've been living in Lake County for about 50 years, still considered a newcomer by people like Miley. Most of them are dead now, though, so I'm getting, anyway. I have two questions of kind of on the back of people that just spoke. And one is that ever since I moved here, I saw that schoolhouse, and it's been little projects that haven't made a lot of attention this whole time. The community loves it. And it is, we don't have a lot of historical things here in Lake County. It is really a treasure, and there is great potential, especially this whole project. When good thing comes out of it, has brought great attention to this schoolhouse, and we really ought to take advantage of it and develop it into something great. And there is the desire now by a group to do that. My other, this is a question. I just assumed that these greenhouses were ventilated and built to mitigate smell. Are these engineered greenhouses like that? So the whole area won't just be skunked out? Okay. I had two things that I wanted to mention, though. In grows of this size, I think we need more opportunity from the planning department and the county in general to involve the kind of discussion from the community that's going on right now. We're neighbors, and I checked, we got a notification later sometime in late December, less than a month ago. And that doesn't give people, like organizations, that doesn't even give a lot of businesses who, who would be involved, time to give a cogent response to these proposals. And when we get notified three weeks before, we know these things have been in the works for maybe years. This one's been going, you know, since the summer of, what, '21? So, and then all the neighbors get notified three weeks ahead of time. That's not right. The other thing is, I'm hoping that the idea of getting like this pad in really early, nobody knew what was going on, way ahead of time, because it was a hemp proposal. And then, wow, what do you know? It's going to be a cannabis operation. And now we're all guessing what that building's going to be used for. I hope this isn't going to be a procedural thing for future cannabis operations that apply for permits. You understand? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Does anybody else in chambers wish to speak? I don't see any more hands in the, in the chambers. Oh, I see one.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Holden Reed, I'm from Kelseyville. I have some questions regarding the fire safety of spruce trees. I, I don't know, is that, are they an approved fire safety tree?
I can direct your question over to...
We're very aware of the fire hazard and, um, the conditions of, of the planting. Uh, the other issue I have is that, uh, is that a final height on the, on that building? Twenty-five feet seems really tall. That's going to obstruct the view from that, uh, schoolhouse property? And does that building really, does it need to be that tall to accommodate what they're doing? And then I wanted to do a, a ditto of the gentleman that spoke about the garbage that's left. Here we have a beautiful historical building that people are willing to invest in and make available to this, to this community, and this marijuana group wants to come in. I just don't think it's a very good compatible use of the property next to a historical property. Those of you who know me have known I have fought this marijuana issue for over ten years. I know this is something that we've talked about before. Is this really the crop that we want, or the vision that we want for this community? I hope you will really consider these questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, do we have anybody in chambers that wish, uh, wish to speak on this item? All right, um, one last look in the Zoom room before we close public comment.
There are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, um, so public comment is closed. We'll bring this back to the commission for...
Chair Chavez, if I may, um, if I have amended, one of the conditions to read is follows. Specific to the vegetative screening, prior to cultivation, the permutee shall plant native plant vegetative screening between the processing slash drying building and the cultivation area, and the old Kelsey Creek Schoolhouse. The native plant vegetative screening shall not grow to a height that blocks the schoolhouse view shed of Mount Canuckdie, and shall be planted no more than ten feet apart, shall be maintained in a healthy state for the life of the project, and shall be irrigated. This was based on, um, this is in response to Ms. Larson's comment.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the, uh, I did see a picture in one of the reports of the schoolhouse, and how you see Mount Canuckdie in the background with the, with the stars. So visualizing that, um, and then seeing a metal building right in the back of that, um, I don't know, it just, it does seem out of place. I guess a visual would be nice to, for all of us to see, but I'm pretty sure we can all just picture a big square right behind that schoolhouse. And yeah, it is something historical that we do have to preserve, and a lot of it is not just the building, it's the, the surroundings of it. Listening to everyone's comments, and, and, I mean, I understand the community's concern with, with this project, and whatever mitigations, uh, the community comes to agreement with, with the applicants, um, uh, I'm sure you guys have worked it out and talked about it, and if you guys are comfortable with, with the mitigations that have, that are taking place, um, I mean, I will just assume that you guys are happy with those mitigations, and if not, there are any more concerns that you guys, that probably came up during this meeting that you guys wanted, uh, discuss with the, the applicants? I don't know, the applicants are here? Okay. So if you guys wanted to come up and perhaps answer some questions, or, or if you guys have any, anything to, to add? Uh, just if you had any, any comments or, about the, about the meeting, or anything that was discussed today by, by the public?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah? Sure. Please approach the podium and say your first and last name.
Hi, uh, my name is John Oliver. I'm the applicant for this project. One of the things that I wanted to bring up, two items. Number one is I'm not from out of state. For whatever reason, the application was, uh, seems to be some sort of human error by the consul, by the consultation office. Uh, I have nothing to do with Las Vegas, I don't live in Las Vegas. I've lived in this area for 25 years. I came here shortly after college. Uh, I've lived in Southern Mendocino County specifically for that period of time. So I am local, I'm a, I'm a cannabis activist, I have deep roots in this culture and in this movement. So I'm not some entity from outside, a corporate entity coming into your community trying to just buy in and...
Yes, sir, please, uh, address your questions to the, to the board.
Pardon me. I'm not someone who's just trying to come in and tax the community. I'm here to contribute to the community and be a part of it. That's my intention, that's my goal. Number two, I wanted to state the fact that when we purchased the property, we purchased the property specifically because of its location in agricultural district, which seems like the most appropriate place to have an agricultural activity. When we looked at this parcel in particular, we were concerned about the schoolhouse immediately, which is why we approached the county and asked specifically who the owner was, because we were interested in buying it for one. And number two, what the intention was with the schoolhouse. And they told us specifically at the parcels, at the, in the parcel assessor's, uh, office, and, uh, in conversations with people in the community, as well as workers who came to maintain and assess the building from time to time in the period, in the two and a half years that I was there specifically. Their intention was to move the building, and apparently it had been discussed for quite a long time. They talked about helicoptering it in, they talked about trucking it out. There were all of these efforts that had been put together to move this building. So this was the primary reason why we were okay with moving forward with this parcel. So now, that somehow has changed in the process. But now we're looking at, and applying all of these conditions and doing these things to a parcel that has been farmed off for over 120 years. We are going to use a fraction of the amount of water that has traditionally been used to farm walnuts and pears on this parcel. We're gonna have a fraction of the number of people, a fraction of the, of the amount of pollution and traffic that has been on this property for a long, long, long time. That schoolhouse, in the period we were there, no one used it. There, no one ever showed up to do anything there, other than to look at it, assess it, and occasionally mow the lawn, which they didn't even do on a regular basis. We had, I actually mowed the lawn twice on that property, just as a public service. So it's not, you know, if it was the case that it had even any kind of facilities, water, bathroom, infrastructure to have children there, much less to house anything in it, would it have been a building that's seriously, uh, dangerous, in my opinion? I think it's, it's an interesting question. But I understand the emotional side of it, and I understand that the community wants to protect its history, and for that reason, I'm completely willing to work with the community, to work with these, uh, requirements, to make this work. And frankly, you know, we bent over backwards to find the most suitable location in this county to, to have this business, you know? It was, the other option was to do like some of these other folks, to go buy 80 acres or whatever, next to a neighborhood, in an area that's far less appropriate. And we chose to do it this way, because this is where agriculture should happen. So, um, that's mostly what I have to say. If there's any questions, I'm happy to field them.
No questions. Thank you. Are you gonna go ahead?
Unless you would like to go first.
I'll, I'll just kind of chime in real quick. My concern as a, as the future of Lake County, Kelseyville, the surrounding areas, is the growth potential for Kelseyville. There's only a certain few ways that it can go, and I just don't, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of the location of this project, um, for multiple reasons. But I'm, I'm gonna let Commissioner Fields chime in, and if I need to echo anything that you say, then I will.
Uh, thank you. Uh, first of all, I have some disclosures to make. I've worked with Elizabeth Larson in the past, many, many years ago, as a news editor at The Record B. We're both journalists. Um, and I had a conversation with Elizabeth earlier this week by phone regarding the schoolhouse. My grandmother attended grade school in this building, and I also own property 1,200 feet to the north. I don't really feel I have a conflict of interest for any of those reasons, but I do have a lot of concerns about this project. I've driven by it a lot as I work in the area, and I've observed, um, for a long, many years, it was a Boy Scout project, and I believe it was in the staff report, it was mentioned that it hadn't been occupied since the twenties, and I just wanted to confirm that that's, that's not inaccurate. I remember visiting the schoolhouse with my kids. I don't remember why, but I remember visiting it and talking about it, and, um, uh, so let me just go through my list of notes. The proximity to Kelsey Creek and the issues raised by Donna Mankiewicz and the Audubon Society regarding the hitch, um, concerns me. I think that because it's been located where it is for so long, I mean, it was a school originally, it's, that's a place where children gather. Maybe it hasn't been used as a classroom specifically, uh, for a hundred years, but it's a school. So I'm trying to think outside the, um, the way we bureaucratically evaluate the rules. And I think it's fair to say, I mean, in my opinion, that should trigger the 1,000-foot setback requirement. I mean, I look at it, it's a school. It's, it's a historic attraction, and it should remain that. I'm sorry about the confusion about moving the school. I remember that discussion in the community many years ago. I believe the proposal was to move it to the Eli Stage Stop, which was extremely high-fire danger area, and I think that for that reason, and maybe some others, that idea was abandoned. So just to address that. Okay, uh, there was also a comment about a house, the closest house being 400 feet away. There are farm labor housing sites immediately to the north, right across the street. There's one to the east, and there's one to the south. And I don't know exactly the measurements, but, um, I don't think that we can overlook farm labor housing. This is housing. People live there.
And Commissioner Fields, are you mentioning that just, um, in reflection for the setbacks? Like to kind of treat it as...
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the rules are on setback to housing, but even if they're just, uh, seasonal housing, which some of them may be, I don't know, it's not my property, but, uh, that's housing. People live there.
Just to treat it as such?
Yeah, it needs to be treated that way. And I don't know how you would know that, um, but I know that, so there it is. And then I had a comment about the property management plan. Uh, we saw this, this, almost the same plan, um, a couple meetings ago. It's clearly cut and paste. It just states the requirement, and, you, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but you need to go in and fill in the blanks, and you need to apply it to the project. Um, what I'm seeing is a cut-and-paste document that, that doesn't apply to this particular situation. So to me, that's inadequate. I think that's about it. It's, uh, the project is situated in a relatively remote area? I don't think so. And I think that's about all. I noted that it does not, from, this might be from the staff report, I'm not quite sure, does not have the potential to create substantial public controversy. We had 96 pages of comment, public comment on this item, and then there were just some typos, Hendrix Road for fire evacuation. And then I was sad to see that the only tribal responses were from out-of-the-area tribes. Uh, I guess we just didn't receive any from Big Valley. I'd like to see some, some of that response. I don't know if they're getting not enough time, or if they don't care, or some, I, I wanna see some response from the tribes, especially considering the proximity to the very, very historically important Austin site nearby.
The AB 52-2 notice was sent out on May 12th of 2020?
Yeah, they should have had time.
Well, they had almost four years. I think they probably had a staff turnover, and I think that the people that are involved with the tribe now are probably more diligent, so...
So is that something we can do, reach out to them again? Or is that appropriate, maybe?
Sorry, I missed that. I was actually requesting staff verify that we have permits for farm labor quarters on the parcels that you mentioned.
Great, I'm getting all the neighbors in trouble. I was requesting, I, I'd like to see some response from the local tribes.
Or any type of correspondence, even if it was from 2020?
Something. Okay, so in situations like this, um, we do not compel a tribe to respond. They get notification at the RFR process, that's our request for review, when we first reached, uh, received the project. They also go, we also notify them officially as part of the AB 52 process. It's totally within their, their option to not respond. We don't hunt them down.
Okay, I think that Mr. Porter really valuably suggested that we, you know, it's been four years since they've been spoken to, and maybe there's been a change in, I mean, is that something that you feel comfortable doing at all, or reaching out to them again?
I'll have to see what the consensus of the commission says. I am comfortable with the efforts that we did make during the processing.
Does, if it's helpful for clarification, um, it looks like two of the tribes did respond, but they both deferred to Big Valley and Middletown Rancheria. So if that helps at all.
Yeah, I, I have a number of issues with this, with this project as it is right now. It's a 23-acre parcel, um, but most of my concerns, I have to say, they're legislative. They're, we're dealing with some laws that were written by the Board of Supervisors, and, um, the minimum acreage size, the location and ag zone, um, it doesn't really address whether this is something that fits into this neighborhood, basically. And I, I just really feel that it doesn't. So, um, that's what I have to say.
Well, uh, we did discuss, uh, in the previous, uh, item, um, that it is considered ag. Uh, this area is ag, uh, all around, uh, I see vineyards all the way. The willingness for the applicant to move the operation south, and on top of that, it's half an acre in greenhouses, um, I could see a lot of the mitigation happening here to make this project, uh, work. This schoolhouse, uh, in the report that we got, it said it was moved in, uh, 1882 to the location where it is now. Is this location the best location for this building? I know that this isn't part of, uh, today's item, uh, but if it was moved once, potentially there might be a better location for it, where it can actually get the attention that it needs and, and deserves? Excuse me, sir. There was a comment earlier today that talks about moving the, the, um, the house before...
The schoolhouse.
The schoolhouse was, um, and so that's why this comment came up as well. If it's getting moved, if it's not getting moved, uh, all these, um, changes to the project have been made to accommodate, uh, the applicants. So I believe that, uh, this project could work in, in the new location. Uh, obviously new maps and elevation views of how the, uh, building would look with, um, the vegetation screening, um, just to see. As of now, um, I mean, the project could move forward, but I, I think that visualization would be very helpful in, in just kind of seeing how the area would look, um, once this operation is up and running. Uh, all the concerns about, uh, trash on other farms... All the concerns about trash on other farms or whatnot, we can't really apply these comments to this specific one. Obviously there are ways to, to communicate to, to the county if there are, you know, issues on certain farms and people should come to the county and discuss their concerns and complaints. That's all allowed. So those are just my, the comments that I kind of had from the new information that I have.
You made me think of something else. I just, I wanted to really commend staff for working, working so hard to resolve the conflicts. And I also wanted to point out that the Lara people, the people who are taking care of this schoolhouse are not making any money from this. They're not profiting it, from it. They're doing this, and the amount of effort I've seen put into this project is phenomenal. And I, I can't be happier to, I'm just thrilled to see it. I think that's about it.
Um, I will echo a little bit on what Commissioner Chavez said. I, I feel that even with the vegetative screening, there's no way that you're gonna miss this project, whether you're coming from Finley towards Kelseyville, whether you're going from Kelseyville towards Finley. There's no, there isn't an amount of vegetative screening or spruce trees that will hide this. I also think of the amount of people that use Finley East Road to connect to our parks over by like the Lakeside Park. And it is an ag zone. And then when I think ag, I think of walnut trees, pear trees, those type of orchard type of products. This to me would be, it is, it is just not a prime location for this type of, of business. And I really, we need to really think strongly about the future of Kelseyville and Finley. And in any type of industry that's going to grow in Kelseyville, there's only, there is limited amounts of land where it can grow. And to have the community members with longstanding history, we will say, in the area and it is nice just to see the community come together and try to fight for what they believe in and having that schoolhouse there, whether, whether it's there just for pictures or for aesthetics or for the history that's behind it, I would love to see it become a community building or, or something like that. And that being said, I can't say with one side of me, I would love to see the community utilize the schoolhouse and then on the other side, say, I would love to see a commercialized industry like this go on. So I, I'm pretty firm on where I stand with this project.
Yeah, I would just like to add, you know, take it into consideration, the concerns, the comments, what my colleagues have said. And even before that, I, I kind of had a, a position of not really supporting this project as it stands. And I'm thankful that all parties involved have come to, sounds like a little bit of agreement. But in terms of where my feelings are coming from, there's, there's too much history that is gonna be impacted. And as I, as I understand the cultural resource aspect, tribal cultural resource aspect, Commissioner Fields mentioned the Mossin Site. The Mossin Site is a historic and significant site that dates back more than 10,000 years. And so there's all of these connections to that location, including the schoolhouse. I know the tribes had their opportunity to comment. Whether they chose to or not, wherever, whatever their position is, is their position. And as I look at this project, just alone on, on the viewshed is, is an issue with me. And, and I know going back historically to the tribal community, the mountain is sacred and is respected as sacred. So those viewsheds are sacred. And so in that personal position, which I don't want to bring into, but I want to share, is enough for me to say that we need to take a, a better look at this. And if we're gonna go forward, how do we create a project that will meet all of these concerns? And, and so at this moment, I'm not ready to support this project, but I will consider to, continue to listen, continue to be open to information, any more comments. But that's my position. I don't want to continue to jump on the comments that have already been made. I'm in agreement with a lot of the comments that have been made by my colleagues and so there's no need to reiterate those. But that's where I stand at, at this moment. And so where we go from there is up to the commission and I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Chavez, Chairman Chavez.
Um, I would suggest that I'm, although I'm very pleased that staff has spent so much time trying to work with people, I also hate to, you know, beat a dead horse, to use a cliche. I, I don't, I don't want to see staff spending more time on this. I don't see how it can be, the aesthetic issues can be addressed with conditions. And the other things I mentioned, I don't, I don't think they can be mitigated. So I would like to make a motion to deny the, the project. If there's no more discussion.
Um, is that a formal motion?
I think I have to read something a little bit more formal than that.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
If there's a motion on the floor.
I would move that the planning commission deny major use permit UP 2040 for higher ground farms on property located at 3545 Finley East Road, Kelseyville APN number 00802607, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated January 11th, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Aye. And motion?
Passes.
Passes as?
As a denial and then you?
We don't do this very often.
Yeah.
And I believe you read the note as well.
Uh, note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination.
Thank you for everyone for sticking it through with us. Long day today.
Thanks, Mr..
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Turner.
And moving on to, we already went through our seven, eight item, which was moved to the next meeting. We do have a department update.
Yes, thank you.
Should we wait for the room to empty?
Wait till it gets cleared.
Yeah, okay.
If discussions could take place out in the hallway, we're moving on to the next item. Thank you. So collaboration has begun with the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake and our contractor and our staff regarding data gathering that will support the climate vulnerability analysis and the countywide evacuation plan. Both of those are required pieces of information for the safety element update. Oh, good, okay. Additionally, at its last meeting, the Board of Supervisors did approve the formation of a GPAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee, as, at the maximum number of 15 members, as well as the types of memberships to be included. So we are preparing a press release that will work with the administrative office to send out far and wide. We are also starting a notification list that it'll, it'll go out to those as well, with the goal of soliciting a varied number of applications for each of those categories. So we're real excited. And we're still working on the draft community engagement plan, but I will let, hopefully we'll have something for the next planning commission meeting that you can find out more about it. Have I introduced you yet?
Yes.
All right. That concludes my report. Thank you. Oh, great. Scoping meeting, one more thing.
You knew there was something.
Right?
Yeah.
She's so good. I'm so excited to have her here. We have scheduled a scoping meeting for the environmental impact report on January 24th from 10:00 to noon, both in the board chambers and on Zoom.
Okay.
Right?
Is that mandatory or do you want us to?
Oh, no.
We don't have to?
No. The scoping meeting, the purpose of a scoping meeting is for people to come together to make sure we think about certain things of their interest in our environmental review.
Okay.
We will still operate the environmental review according to the CEQA guidelines, but sometimes people just want to make sure that things are included. That is the purpose of a scoping meeting. It is not mandatory.
Okay.
And if any of you commissioners would like to attend, please coordinate with staff because more than two of you at one time will create a meeting.
Okay. And when, when do you think you'll have the, the stuff ready for the, like the general plan and like all the getting, getting everybody together and like, you know, help me out here?
We are hoping to have our kickoffs for the local area plan update, starting this spring. We're going to use, basically, we're gonna use the, the various area town halls or municipal councils as our starting point. You want me to talk about that?
Sure.
Okay. We are really excited that there seems to be grassroots movement right now in the community of Kelseyville to form a Kelseyville Town Hall.
Excellent.
Yes. That'll be really cool because that sort of, it goes beyond just general plan. The, one of the benefits of a town hall, as far as our department is concerned, is that they do, they do act as an advisory board regarding planning and land use issues, as well as a number of other things. And so it, it's an important voice. So that'll be great if that gets some traction.
Mm-hmm.
I was gonna talk about something else, but I forgot what it is and I don't think it's, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
That might spark something. Yeah, no, I think people are getting excited about the, you know, the area plans and kind of revamping those and seeing.
I agree. There has been interest that's so, it's so exciting because we're all excited in our department to get started.
Yeah.
And so just having public awareness is so helpful.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna be coming at them for all of their visioning and all of their input for the next few years. Yes.
And one of the things that I, I think I really struggle with on this commission is the fact that the general plan is so out of date and the fact that the cannabis ordinance was approved well after that time. I just feel like I don't have the tools I need, so I'm really looking forward to the new general plan.
The state shares your discomfort and that is why it is mandated by law that general plans be updated every 20 years. But you're right, so much has happened to our community since 2008, including wildfires and droughts and floods and a lot of climate stuff. And so that's why it's a pandemic. Yeah, so our communities are no longer what they were back then and the local area plans are even older than 2008, all except for Middletown. So, so we have a lot of updating to do to make sure that the future, that the vision of the community going forward actually resonates with the community that is here.
Yeah, right.
And one, one thing that I think is really cool is Sabrina Anderson and I reached out to the Cobb Area Council so that we could go to one of their meetings and get an idea of what a Kelseyville Town Hall might look like.
That's good.
And they more than welcomed us. They were very responsive and positive and welcoming and.
Yay.
So I'm excited.
Wonderful.
Excellent.
All good stuff.
That is good stuff. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Uh, meeting adjourned at 12:31.